Can we have people silence their phones, please?
Yeah, awesome, thank you, yeah. Here's some phones going off in the background. It's very sensitive a mic, so if you silence your phones a little bit, thank you. So, we're gonna get started, it's eleven o'clock. I'm Bob Klein, just the moderator. I'm gonna introduce the table here in a second, then the Colonel will speak. We have a couple of rules because we want to make sure everybody gets a talk who's signed up for talk. So, this is the public hearing for Enbridge Line Five Wisconsin Segment Relocation. Again, I introduce myself already. I'd like to introduce the table first. So we have Colonel Swenson, who's the commander of St. Paul District for the United States Army Corps of Engineers. I'll be the other one standing up talking, that would be CD from A C. And they'll speak very little, and we do not. Speakers over there are gonna speak, we're gonna go for you. And we also have Chuck, Congress, Congress, sorry, I mispronounced that. So he's the Chief of the American Corps Division for this district. And then we have John Carroll, who's the district counselor.
Good morning. My name is Colonel Eric Swenson, Commander of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, St. Paul District. And I am the presiding officer for today's public hearing. It is important to me that we hold this hearing near the proposed project site. And to do that today, here in Ashland, we owe a huge thank you to our hosting facility, the Northwood Technical College, and the college staff for accommodating this hearing and all of us today. So, thank you. Enbridge Energy has requested the Corps, the Corps grants a permit to discharge dredge and fill material in waters of the United States and install pipeline under the White River, a navigable water of the U.S. This work would facilitate the construction of Enbridge's proposed Line Five Wisconsin Segment Relocation Project. The Corps is evaluating Enbridge's application pursuant to the Section 404 of the Clean Water Act and Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act of eighteen ninety-nine. The Corps does not have authority over the overall construction or operation of pipelines or any substance being transported within a pipeline. I appreciate that you may have questions for the Corps. However, during today's hearing, my staff and I will not be able to respond to questions or comments. Please understand that your comment is just as important to me when provided in writing as it is in person. Due to time limitations, each selected speaker will be allotted three minutes. And all those wishing to provide verbal comments during the hearing may not be allocated time. For these reasons, I have team members available on-site today to accept your written comments, and we are also accepting written comments provided via U.S. mail or email through the end of the day, July fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. All comments, verbal and written, will be considered as part of the Corps' decision. I ask that each speaker provide their comments independently, and that each speaker is afforded the opportunity to share their views without interruption. With me today are members of my regulatory team, Office of Counsel, Public Affairs, Information Technology Staff, and the St. Paul District's Security Team. Today's hearing will be recorded and posted on our Line Five webpage for public viewing. Additionally, we have court reporters here to transcribe all verbal comments. The transcript will be made part of the Corps' administrative record. We will take short breaks approximately each hour called by myself or as dedicated to the hearing moderator. During the breaks, we will not be accepting or transcribing comments. Additional information regarding the Corps process and alternate methods to provide comments are available from my team members outside this auditorium. Finally, thank you to all attendees with me here today. I am heartened to see such interest from the public. Now, please give your attention to Bob for more detail on today's hearing. Thank you.
So, I kinda wanna do an editorial thing. I'm sorry that we're reading a script. This is a legal proceeding, so we're gonna make sure we're doing it right and that you get, you know, fair treatment to speak all of your mind. But I can tell you a little bit about, you know, safety features. Obviously, you're in a school, in the back room, as you probably already know, we're down the hall there, there's a drinking fountain there. If there is an emergency of any sort, it'll be determined whether we stay in the building or go outside. I'll tell you that, at that point, I'll be told by security if that's the case. A.J. here, A.J.'s my assistant here, so I'm getting on track. So let me read my script, which hopefully would pass. Okay, so, before we call the first speaker today, I'm going to review some basic information, the rules and expectations for the hearing. We're gonna have A.J. just kind of paraphrase what you see on the wall here in just a second. And it's just rules, so we get speakers to be able to speak clearly and not have a big problem at all. Okay. Today's hearing will be in two sessions. You're in first session now. We'll take an hour break at three o'clock and rejoin at four o'clock until nine o'clock. You have ticketed speakers, you all know that, you heard it out there, I probably don't have to go through that too much, but ticketed speakers must register at the site, which you all did. Each speaker will have three minutes. There'll be a timer, you'll see up here in a second. And as you get closer to your three minutes, I'll give you the two-minute mark, I will quietly say one more minute. You don't have to stop talking because I'm talking. I'll just say one more minute, so you know you have one more minute, you know, please summarize whatever you're gonna say. After three minutes, we have to kind of cut the mic off and move to the next person. So there'll be two people there standing all the time, and only one person will be speaking. The timer will be displayed as I just mentioned. To optimize the number of speakers, we often use speakers, mention that back and forth, left and right. And if you kind of go over, I'm gonna have to say, you know, you gotta sit down because we've got to hear everybody. We can't allow people to talk, continue to talk. And you can say whatever you want, as long as it's not profane or nasty. You can talk about any stuff if you want, but hopefully it's specific to this project. When you're called to speak, give us your name and your spelling your name. You don't have to give us any personal information like a social security number or email address and that stuff. You do have that opportunity, as the Colonel mentioned, if you wanna write what you wanna say and put it out there, you can put whatever on that document you want. Realize that this is a public hearing, so it's going out on a webex, so please don't give anything personal to yourself. Okay? Speakers who are supposed to speak, because they went to the lottery, but aren't here in the room, we just have to pass you and move on. You can see the numbers up there, the speakers know their numbers, and they will speak in that order. And all attendees are welcome to quietly join in or exit the room. So we'll have to close doors and that stuff, but just do as quietly as possible. You can see there's cameras all over, and cords all over the place, so please be careful. And, once you kind of refrain from sharing information back and forth, because it's gonna be disruptive. Again, we have a recorder, it needs to hear everything, and we also are recording, you know, audio video, so please try to keep the noise down. And, all on the right, okay, I'm just gonna rate it, if you feel lost on it, it's alright. Okay, for those persons who did not give a verbal comment, the Colonel already talked about the three different ways to do it, so I won't listen to that again. But they have the website here for engineers, there's email and regular mail, so you have plenty of opportunities. And I think time to comment closes on July fifth, closes business, I believe. Okay, so please do before that. Okay, and, I mentioned it, and I want you to see this, it's public information, so please understand when you write or mail, whatever, we need to let everybody see it legally, so make sure you write what you wanna write. I talked about the restrooms already, talked about the alarm of the waters, and we're okay there. So, next up, Colonel is the presiding person here, so he's the one who talks about time, so he'll tell us when we take a break, and tell us when to start. I will only communicate with the speakers, and we're not gonna go back and forth. I'll just tell the speaker, I'm sorry, your time's up, whatever. It's time to be answering questions, otherwise we're never gonna get through all the speakers, I mean, you know. So, Colonel, start. Okay, I'm sorry. First speaker come out, and the second speaker can stand side by side if they'd like. I won't do this every time, but just remind you, your name and spelling, please.
Hi, first off, I wanna thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here at the Line Five public hearing. My name is Sadie Paradise, S-A-D-I-E, Paradise, P-A-R-A-D-I-S-E. And to me, Line Five is very special. I grew up in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan to a Line Five pipeliner, and I grew up learning all about Line Five. Line Five was and is what fills my parents' propane tank to heat our family home, their home. Line Five provided my dad an excellent career and also provided our family with the resources that allowed my brothers and I to grow up comfortably in a heated home, attending a heated school. Now, I'm proud to say that both my oldest brother and I are employed by Enbridge. My brother, a Line Five pipeliner, has a beautiful home and family in the Upper Peninsula. Line Five fills his propane tank, giving his children, my nieces and nephew, a heated home and a heated school, among other things. Line Five is personal to me. As I drive back to the Upper Peninsula to visit, I follow Line Five the whole way. It is literally the pathway to home. I now currently reside in Wisconsin and get to work with and advocate for Line Five daily. As an employee, I understand the level of safety and commitment Enbridge has to the environment, our communities, and our people. Enbridge goes beyond expectations, and it is truly inspiring and rewarding to work for such an impactful organization. If Line Five were to shut down, it would be detrimental to the Midwest. Propane would not be easily accessible as three propane refineries would be forced to shut down. Line Five allows us to have access to heat not only our homes, but our businesses and our schools, not to mention the dependency used by the agriculture industry in Wisconsin and throughout the region. The proposed reroute was very carefully assessed, ensuring the utmost respect towards cultural resources, water quality, and risks surrounding erosion and sedimentation. The proposed reroute considers impacts on wetlands, water bodies, habitats, and so much more. The economic boost the Line Five project will bring to Wisconsin is also something to highlight, adding a hundred and thirty-five million dollars to Wisconsin and bringing in seven hundred family-sustaining jobs, the jobs like my dad's, my brother's, and mine, working on Line Five, allowing our families to be in a heated home and attend heated schools. In closing, I'm here advocating my support for Line Five. I can say with integrity that Enbridge does everything top-tier, and we are here to show respect for the Bad River Ban by removing our pipe from the land while simultaneously showing the utmost respect to the environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Davis Depp, D-E-N-N-I-S, D-E-P-P. I do live in this area, and I am a member of the Operating Engineers Local One Thirty-Nine. I'm also the statewide line business representative of the One Thirty-Nine. While the Operating Engineers Local One Thirty-Nine is headquartered in Pewaki, the union maintains district to be a good community member. I'm sorry. While Operating Engineers Local One Thirty-Nine is headquartered in Pewaki, the union maintains district offices in Madison, Appleton, Illinois, as well as state-certified training school in Keloma. Operating Engineers Local One Thirty-Nine has more than eleven thousand five hundred active and retired members. Operating Engineers Local One Thirty-Nine and I, along with most Wisconsinites, consider them to be a good community member. They employ hundreds of our neighbors and friends, pay millions in taxes, and safely and efficiently transport North American-sourced and produced products that are vitally important to the safety of our families and to the health of our economy. The Line Five relocation project does not increase the use or capacity of the crude oil or refined products. It simply replaces a portion of the existing pipeline at the request of a sovereign tribal nation with new, even safer, pipeline. The Line Five relocation project was thoroughly surveyed and selected to avoid sensitive resource-end areas. The project design mitigates or minimizes the impacts on wetlands, waterways, threatened and endangered species habitats, archaeological and cultural resources, and other areas that may impact the health and vitality of the forests within the area. As lifelong outdoorsman, I am very pleased that Enbridge is taking these important steps. A Wisconsin-based business, Michael's Pipeline, has been selected as the mainline construction contractor for the four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar reroute. Michael's employs hundreds of our Local One Thirty-Nine members throughout Wisconsin. The project will bring an estimated seven hundred family-sustaining construction jobs, hired largely from the region's union halls, and will provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin communities. More than ten percent of the project budget, which is forty-six million dollars, will be spent specifically with native-owned businesses, including the training and hiring of tribal leaders. The Line Five relocation project is necessary for the health, welfare, and safety and economic security of the normal northern Wisconsin residents. Many of us rely on propane to heat our homes and businesses. Ensuring a sufficient supply of propane at an affordable price is highly dependent on the Line Five relocation project. I urge you to issue the necessary permits for the Line Five relocation project as quickly as possible. Thank you for the opportunity, Speaker.
Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Dan Allen, A-N-A-L-L-E-N. I'm the Director of Environment and Sustainability for Michael's Corporation. I'm here to express Michael's Corporation's support for the Enbridge Line Five project. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and participate in this review. We also appreciate the thoroughness that the Army Corps and Enbridge has taken into the assessment of the project with respect to potential environmental impacts. It is imperative, the purpose and need of the Line Five project is realized to continue to safely transport crude and natural gas liquids from Canada to Wisconsin to the U.S. while avoiding the Bad River Ban reservation. Energy and security relies on all forms of energy, including crude and natural gas liquids, to heat our homes, schools, businesses, power transportation, fuel industry, and agriculture here in the state of Wisconsin and throughout our region. The proposed route alternative is the best route for the project as compared to the other alternatives for several reasons. It reduces most environmental future impacts compared to the other routes, including aquatic resources, wetlands, and natural register of historic places along Route Alternative R-801. It provides a balance of reducing impacts, overall pipeline length, apportitive effects, while providing more distance from the Bad River Reservation and downstream waters. Furthermore, upon our review, we agree the project will not have significant adverse impacts on environmental resources within the Army Corps jurisdiction. Thus, an environmental impact statement, or EIS, is not necessary. And the continuance of the environmental assessment EA process is in the best interest of the project and the Corps' need for review. With Michael's experience building pipelines throughout North America, we believe the Army Corps' draft EA adequately addresses the best selected construction methods to safely and efficiently minimize or avoid environmental impacts, most of which will be temporary in nature during installation and restoration of the Line Five pipeline. Michael's is a family-owned, Wisconsin-based construction company that has operated in Wisconsin since nineteen fifty-nine. Our owners and employees are avid outdoorsmen and women. As such, we would not support a project that would compromise the wetlands, waterways, and habitats of the environment of our beautiful state. Michael shares Enbridge's commitment and approach to construction of the Line Five project with not only the environmental requirements of the regulatory process, but also with the core values that we both share. As a union construction company, we will work with our local union partners to fill at least seven hundred construction jobs, largely from the region and the union halls here locally, that will also provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin communities. Michael's and myself, we support Enbridge and the Line Five project.
Next speaker.
Good morning, Colonel, Army Corps of Engineers Corps. My name is Dan Olson, D-A-N-O-L-S-O-L-N. I'm a resident of Superior, Wisconsin, near the farm, away from where the Enbridge terminal is in Superior. I wanna run through a couple of statistics, and you're gonna hear them over again today, and I appreciate that. This is a four-hundred-million-dollar, four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project. And Enbridge and Michael's Corporation has entered into a project labor agreement which will ensure that good wages and benefits are paid to all the people that are gonna be working on this project. It's going to be a union project. I'm the Business Manager of Labor's Local Ten Ninety-One, I'm the leader of Minnesota. We represent all one thousand people in this area, from here to some counties in the area and surrounding Minnesota. You heard the hundred-and-thirty-five-million-dollar economic impact that this project will have. There's also ten percent, roughly, of this investment going to native-owned businesses, so the partnership that Enbridge has garnered with the communities in the region is something very good, very good for the community. Line Five is a major supplier of propane to this area, through this area. And it will heat, in the dead of winter, up to two-hundred-thousand homes. So, the partnership that Enbridge and the tribes and the unions and the communities, Ashland and Iron Counties, those are the things that are important. We have a workforce that will build this pipeline as safe as every step that Enbridge has taken along the way to ensure the communities make sure that the water is protected, the air is protected, the land is protected, the animals are protected, and the people are protected. So, the partnership that we have with everybody is something that is very important to all of us. To drill under the White River, there's processes for that that we believe will be done safely and with our partnership with Michael's Corporation. They are a good Wisconsin construction company, a good Wisconsin pipeline contractor. And we have the skilled workforce to do this work for you, and we wanna make sure that everyone in this community be heard, one way or the other, in this hearing. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Craig Summerfield, C-R-A-I-G, S-U-M-M-E-R-F-I-E-L-D. I am the Senior Director of Environmental and Energy Policy at Wisconsin Manufacturers and Powers, or WUC. In that capacity, I currently serve on the Wisconsin DNR's Drinking Water and Groundwater Study Group, as well as the Air Management Advisory Group, and previously served on other DNR advisory committees related to environmental rulemakings. WUC is the combined state chamber and state manufacturer association. We are the largest business association in Wisconsin, representing approximately three-thousand-eight hundred membered companies of all sizes and from every sector of the economy. Since nineteen eleven, our mission has been to make Wisconsin the most competitive state in the nation with business. Wisconsin manufacturers and other businesses depend on access to affordable and reliable energy in order to grow and maintain jobs in Wisconsin. Line Five is a crucial piece of infrastructure we need to ensure Wisconsin businesses continue to have access to affordable and reliable energy. It's difficult to overstate the negative impacts of shutting down Line Five. If we shut down Line Five, a major propane supplier has warned if we close three refineries in the region, including one in Superior. This would severely impact Wisconsin's energy supply and say nothing of lost jobs. Moreover, an estimated twenty-one hundred trucks per day would be needed to leave Superior and travel east on Highway Two in order to transport crude oil and natural gas liquids currently moved by Line Five. Conversely, if the Line Five project is approved, we will protect jobs in Superior refinery and protect access to reliable energy for businesses and rural homeowners in Wisconsin. In addition, the project will create seven hundred family-sustaining jobs and provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin. Moreover, Michael's, as has been mentioned previously, is a Wisconsin-based construction company, has been selected as the mainline construction contractor for this four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar reroute project. Of course, with a project like this, protection of the environment is a top priority. Importantly, Enbridge has put forward an environmental protection plan that was crafted to meet or exceed the state or federal environmental protection and erosion control requirements, specifications, and practices. The project design reflects a mindful plan designed to mitigate impacts of wetlands, water bodies, and threatened endangered species habitat. In addition, the Line Five relocation project was thoroughly surveyed and selected to avoid sensitive resources in areas. In summary, Enbridge has proposed a plan to relocate Line Five safely and environmentally responsibly. Wisconsin businesses depend on critical energy infrastructure like Line Five in order to create maintain jobs in the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We're talking about the reroute here, and it seems to me that the White River is the only one mentioned, and it crosses much of Zivi, and I don't know why it's not considered a navigable waterway. Because I took my kids down that river. And so I'm not sure why you're not including this in the horizontal drilling, because I navigated it. We've been navigating this for thousands of years. This is our home. Our treaties, our treaties with the United States government, right? This is not just your land to permit on, this is ours too. We share it, we share these resources. Fifty percent of the harvestable resources in the Seated Territory are ours. And to put them at risk is to put my children's food at risk, my grandchildren's food at risk, my grandchildren's water. I don't even have grandchildren yet, but I'm thinking about them. They're here, just as we were, just as the ones who signed those treaties to maintain this space for us, for all of us, thought of me. And now it's my obligation to do the same. Enbridge has shown, over Minnesota with the Line Three replacement project, that they're not very good at horizontal drilling. They've reached out for us. Ain't gonna happen in my house. This is my home, and while I'm waiting. This reroute is a slap in the face to the Bad River Nation. It's a slap in the face because we said out of the watershed. We didn't say off the reservation. You said off the reservation. We said out of the watershed. You are still crossing Washkezivi, you are still crossing Washkezivi. These are our waters, all of ours, not exclusive to Anishinaabe people, to all people, human beings. You, me, all of us. It feeds us, it clothes us. All our needs are met by this land, not by Enbridge. I can drink the water here, right now. Let's keep it that way, the winch is annoying.
Thank you. Representative Green, please, sir.
Yes, thank you. I am State Representative Chance Green. I'm here to speak on behalf of Line Five, and I appreciate everyone coming up today, and I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak, and I appreciate Northwood Technical College for all things. The biggest issue as State Representative that I've heard about this line is safety. This line has been around since nineteen fifty-three, and it has proven not only to be the most efficient way to move essential fuels through northern Wisconsin, but it also has proven to be the safest. With that said, Enbridge has done its due diligence when it comes to permitting and taking all the proper steps that the state and federal government require when it comes to permitting, and they've gone above and beyond in that, on those issues. They've also done all their due diligence when it comes to not affecting wetlands and other things downstate in other essential areas like Copper Falls when it comes to roaming the reroute around the Bad River Reservation. They've done all their due diligence, I apologize, all their due diligence in that regard, as well as ensured all the landowners in that as well as ensuring all the landowners in that reroute, they are on board and they're ready to go. When it comes to the economic impact on northern Wisconsin, this is going to be huge. It's offering roughly 700 jobs that not only, good jobs. These are good, high paying jobs with benefits that will definitely benefit northern Wisconsin. And that's roughly $135 million impact when it comes to northern Wisconsin. So this will be huge when it comes to our small communities and benefiting them. It also adds from, as a State Representative, it would have a $6.4 million additional tax revenue for the state of Wisconsin. And that can be spent towards other things such as schools and other needs that the state has. So this is a crucial pipeline and it has been in the process for four years. It is now time to pass those permits and let's get this job done. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
One minute. Excuse me. Kim Jones, K I M J O N E S, Jr. I'm the owner of Pure Tiger's Cultural Resource Management and I'm here to support permitting of the Line 5 project. I got started on this project back in 2019 and 2020. I was also part of the Line 3 project, which was permitted way back when after a lengthy permitting process with that. I did the cultural resource survey work as part of this project to ensure the protection of those resources that were mentioned before that are cultural, the cultural resources. I'm a Lees Lake Bad member from the Lees Lake Reservation. And we as well, like Bad River, asked for the Line 3 to be removed off our watershed and outside of our reservation. That happened and those resources were protected and avoided on other along the route. And I worked with the Fond du Lac Band with duly during that survey process back then. I'm an individual tribal business owner and I have benefited working with Enbridge and making sure that these sites are protected and these resources are protected for future generations. As people have mentioned, it provides economic opportunity to change people's lives around and make it better with the wages that we pay to our employees and to our members. And I hired tribal members from not just my community, but from other reservation communities as well. I'm very supportive of the project and part of the process that the Corps has done. I've worked with your staff for many years over the course of my career, which is over 30 some years, working in this natural resource, cultural resource field. And your staff has done excellent work in regarding and making sure that consultation process is followed to the teeth as this meeting is and along with the regulatory and protecting the resources under the National Advisory Preservation Act as well. With that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak and be a welcome and a welcome. You're good.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mike Mertes, M E R T E S. I'm here against the proposed Line 5 reroute and continuing illegal operation of Line 5. I designed this sign to clarify the real issues surrounding Line 5. Enbridge has confused the discussions surrounding Line 5 with irrational arguments about pipelines in general and left a mistaken public impression that Line 5 is crucial to the economy of upper Michigan and northern Wisconsin. It is not. An industrial logistics and supply consulting firm in 2003 highlighted these findings. A multiple alternative supply sources exist. There is no risk of supply shortages. A reconfiguring of supply of Line 5 markets would not entail any novel approaches usual and customary for the industry, if alternatives exist and are already supporting the Line 5. This picture of me was taken in 1953, the year the pipeline was installed. This is the technology we're dealing with, okay? It's as old as I am and it was expected to be decommissioned in 50 years. So we have, and my pipeline is only carrying blood since that's what they're originally designed to do. We have no idea what kind of oil based chemical cocktail is going through Line 5 today. The people impacted by the Enbridge Kalamazoo River spill are suffering a number of maladies from exposure to these undisclosed chemicals. Enbridge's chemical mixture is a trade secret. Other companies don't know what their toxic potion is. Other companies know. Enbridge doesn't want the public to know. Non-disclosure to keep the public in the dark is their real trade secret. The reroute was chosen to be discussed as the shortest and cheapest one while staying as close to the boundaries of the Bad River Reservation as possible. There's no indication that the reroute being proposed is with any concern for environmental responsibility. In fact, it makes the risky situation worse due to drilling chemicals and environmental destruction during construction. Now, there's one small element of this whole issue that does make sense to me, about the only believable thing I've heard from Enbridge. Enbridge says that the old pipeline is disrupted a bit in Michigan and some propane is taken off. Well, I too am over 70 years old and if I were traveling on a 700 mile trip, I might have to stop somewhere along the line to be relieved of a little gas myself.
10 seconds, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I appreciate you allowing me to speak today. My name is James Martinson, J A M E S, M A R T I N S E N. I was born, raised, and currently reside in National Wisconsin with my family. I want to make it clear that I have not been paid to be here. I have not been bused in from anywhere or other parts of the region. I'm local through and through. Like others in this room, I take pride in calling Ashland my home. I can't imagine living anywhere else. As someone who has lived their entire life here, I know how heavy I will roll our lakes, rivers, and lands played in our daily lives. I myself am an avid outdoorsman and outside of work, you can typically find me in the woods around the water. I recognize that this is a hot topic of debate we find ourselves in. The hard reality is that to maintain the quality of life we deserve and we rely on, we are consumers of oil and gas, the transportation that oil and gas has led me here. It's eager to think that a high demand product will not get to market. Personally, like many others, we would prefer this oil and gas to be transported via pipeline than using ships across our Great Lakes, railroads through our towns, or thousands more tractor trailers on our employees. We all know that there will never be 100% support of a pipeline project yet for this reroute. Enbridge has earned 100% final approval, which I think is nothing short of impressive. Nobody wants this spill to occur. I commend Enbridge's work to use the latest technology to greatly reduce the likelihood of that happening. From everything that I've seen, Enbridge is a company that values safety and will put a quality pipeline in the ground with Michaels. I view the Line 5 reroute as a win-win for all key players. Enbridge gets the continued product that we need. The local community enjoys the economic benefit and the tribal commissions get the pipeline off tribal lands. There is no question that in doing this, though, each party still makes sacrifices. I do believe this reroute is the best alternative than replacing the pipeline from its current path.
One minute.
The Army's Corps' mission is to deliver vital engineering solutions in collaboration with our partners to secure nations, energize our economy, and reduce disaster risk. Granting this permanent alliance with your mission, I have no doubt this project will be done safely and with the least environmental impact as possible. I ask you to approve the Enbridge permit and allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Anya Janssen, A N Y A, J A N S S E N. I am a staff attorney of Midwest Environmental Advocates, a nonprofit environmental law firm based in Madison. Our message today can be distilled in one main point, and that is for the Army Corps to take responsibility. First, the Corps has a duty to protect the waters of the United States and must prohibit discharges that would cause unacceptable adverse impacts. As the EPA has already warned, Enbridge's proposed Line 5 reroute would cause unacceptable adverse impacts. These would be neither minor nor temporary. At a minimum, the Corps must take responsibility and evaluate these impacts by conducting a full environmental impact statement. An inadequate E I S will demonstrate the appropriate course of action here, and that is to deny the permit. Additionally, Enbridge plans to use horizontal directional drilling, the same construction method used on Line 3 that caused aquifer breaches and fracouts. These outcomes are neither inadvertent nor unforeseeable, but rather are predictable and likely consequences. The Corps must take responsibility and independently evaluate the safety of these construction methods. Do not abdicate this responsibility to a foreign corporation that puts profit over the health of communities and natural resources and that has a horrendous track record for environmental contamination and endangerment. Furthermore, the Army Corps has a federal trust responsibility to the Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chippewa. M E A stands with the Bad River Band in opposition to Enbridge and the continued operation of this pipeline. Both the continued operation of Line 5 and the proposed reroute threatens the band's treaty protective natural resources. The Corps must honor its federal trust responsibility by denying Enbridge the permits to build a pipeline through the Seated Territory and within the Bad River watershed. Lastly, the Corps must take responsibility and consider the real possibility of a Line 5 shutdown. There's an active shutdown order for the segment of Line 5 that is trespassing across the Bad River Reservation. Yet this is not considered by the Corps. To say the Corps has authority over the fate of the existing pipeline is absurd. Simply put, if the Corps denies Enbridge the permits to reroute Line 5, Enbridge almost certainly will be forced to comply with the June 2026 deadline to shut down the existing pipeline. We therefore demand the Corps take responsibility by first adequately assessing the environmental impacts and thereby denying Enbridge these permits. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Luke Dirk. I'm co-owner, J I M B U R A E E. I'm co-owner of St. Pierre Incorporated, relocated in Bessemer, Michigan. I bought the business back in 2008 and a large segment of my business is home heat. I deliver diesel, gas, and in 2012, we got into propane. What was happening, I was losing a lot of my customers, diesel customers, fuel oil, to the propane industry because the change in the furnaces was expensive and with propane being a lot cheaper. So we got into propane and I currently have roughly 1,000 customers that use propane. In the 12, excuse me, 13, 14 season, as everybody knows, we had a propane shortage. Just getting into the business, I had a heck of a time trying to locate and find product. I ended up shipping product all the way from St. Louis, Missouri to keep my customers with heat and the propane that they needed for their life. So I'm strictly here to, you know, we need this pipeline. Propane comes from Junction City, Wisconsin, Superior, Wisconsin. And they just put a rail in Tomahawk. The issue is I, as a very low usage customer compared to Marigaz who uses a billion gallons of propane a year. They have access to it. For me, I have to find it a little bit here, a little bit there. And I have to have a backup because if I can't get the propane to service my customers, I go out of business and they lose their heat. So Line 5 to me, to have the local where we're not driving thousands of miles to pick up the product, get it here to use for our local economy is, we have to have it. So shutting down one line, even in Duluth, Minnesota, they only have one line propane if you shut down Enbridge. And so I'm strictly here to help try and keep my customers and my business alive. I appreciate it. Thank you very much and have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Naomi Tilison, N A O M I T I L L I S O N. The Director of Washkez-Zivi Natural Resources Department with the Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chippewa. With which for the time to speak today, our Enbridge's proposal to construct a 41 mile oil pipeline. Enbridge is proposing this project because the current Line 5 pipeline has been in trespass since 2013 on the Bad River Reservation. They failed to demonstrate changes to size, type, and location of its infrastructure at river crossings protecting people from floods and failed to demonstrate protected fisheries and waterways. Our department's initial review of the Corps' draft combined decision document, or D C D D, indicates that relies on incomplete data and limited analysis. The D C D D continues to highlight issues with the piecemeal wave data that data has been submitted by the applicant and how this hampers the regulators and public's understanding of the impacts of the project. One example of this is the Corps using an older wetland and water body crossing table for their Appendix 15 when a more up to date table is available on the Wisconsin DNR's website. A second example is discrepancies in mapping G I S data sets showing project features in different areas. This makes the proposal unclear, making it difficult to understand the effects of the proposal. A more comprehensive evaluation of the effects of the proposal and alternatives analysis is needed. Alternatives exist that could result in less environmental damages and adverse effects on the environment such as using other existing pipelines to transport the oil. Due to the nature of our region, pipeline construction poses huge risk to ecosystem. The proposal includes blasting around 7.8 miles and trenching drilling and backfilling within and adjacent to hundreds of wetlands and streams and inter groundwater aquifers. After construction, there's the effects of inspecting and maintaining a pipeline, including the corridor and the numerous access routes. These effects do not appear to be accounted for in the D C D D. We have firsthand experience on the reservation of how Corps citing decisions and how constructing and maintaining a pipeline can adversely affect the ecosystem and how that combined with maintenance failures can set the stage for potential environmental disasters. We are learning about the cumulative health effects and resources effects of pipeline existence and operation. The Corps must take a harder look at impacts through an environmental impact statement as a project will have significant indirect and cumulative impacts to the fish feed and bad river waters. Ecology, the band's treaty rights, which you'll hear from Chairman Landtrippel, it will impact our streams, rivers, and fisheries and our groundwater aquifers that so many of us in the Schwanzen Bay area depend on for state drinking water. The project will have significant and permanent impact on our wetlands providing critical functions such as storing floodwaters, making us more resilient to future storms, and protecting downstream water quality. An E I S is warranted to more thoroughly evaluate the proposal and alternatives and the effects, including consideration of the band's downstream water quality standards.
Now, immediate finish, please.
We encourage you to read Bad River's reports, the federal guidelines, and write comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Chad Zuleg, C H A D Z U L E G E R. I'm the Government Affairs Director of the Dairy Business Association. Dairy Business Association, or D B A, is a nonprofit organization of Wisconsin dairy farmers, milk processors, and allied business partners working together to boost the state's dairy community. D B A's members come from across the dairy spectrum, from farms of all sizes, cheesemakers, to animal health companies, lenders, insurance providers, and more. I'm here today to lend D B A's voice to those asking the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to approve the permits needed to move forward with the Line 5 relocation project. Access to affordable, reliable energy is critical to every Wisconsin farmer. Line 5 has been an important piece of that energy infrastructure in our state and region for decades. The relocation project ensures that Line 5 will remain operational for years to come, helping to meet the gasoline, diesel, and propane demands, both agricultural and non-agricultural uses. Line 5 plays a particularly important role in the regional propane supply and propane's essential energy source for just about every dairy farm in our state. Propane is often the only viable energy source to heat farmers' homes, livestock farms, and milking parlors. It is even used to power some farm equipment. As you'd likely know and already heard, the major propane supplier in the region, Plains Midstream, has said that it will close its propane facilities in Superior and the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, creating a major void in the propane supply that will hurt not just farmers, but everyone who relies on propane for heat during the cold winters. Farmers are proud of their work to be good stewards of land and water resources and D B A members are at the forefront of sustainable farming practices to ensure clean drinking water resources for all Wisconsin residents. That is why, when we look closely at the project details, we were glad to see the design by Enbridge reflects a mindful plan to mitigate or minimize the impacts on wetlands, water lines, threatened endangered species habitat, and archeal lines, threatened and endangered species habitats, and archaeological and cultural resources, and other areas that may impact the health and vitality of land and water resources within our area. In fact, the draft decision document released by the Army Corps states that the least environmentally damaging practical alternative is the route Enbridge has proposed. This permit application has been under consideration for years now. Numerous road deviations and wetland crossing alternatives have been thoroughly analyzed, and I request that you quickly move forward with a final decision so this critical energy infrastructure can continue to operate and provide much-needed energy, and certainly to Wisconsin dairy farmers. Thank you for your time today. On behalf of Wisconsin dairy farmers, I respectfully ask you to approve Enbridge's permit application and allow the line five project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Brad Olson, B.R.A.D.O.L.S.O.M., President of the Wisconsin Farmers. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on my pipeline's benefit, Wisconsin agriculture. Farming in Wisconsin is a risky and challenging industry. Every day, there are many unpredictable variables that impact farmers across the state. What cannot be unpredictable for farmers is how they get the necessary fuel to support and run their farms. Without the crude oil and natural gas being transported by line five, farmers across Wisconsin will be left with an uncontrollable situation. Will they, will they be able to secure enough fuel when it is time to harvest? Will there be a consistent supply of natural gas for drying grain in the fall? How will fuel be transported to rural farms to maintain the necessary impairments? Right now, farmers can depend on the fuel transported on line five, especially in rural Wisconsin. In many rural areas across the country, access to natural gas and crude oil can be limited and inconsistent. The line five pipeline ensures that these essential commodities are delivered safely and steadily, supporting both rural residential and local business needs. Additionally, line five contributes to lower energy costs by providing direct and efficient power for fuel. This helps reduce transportation costs, which in turn lowers energy prices, which is particularly important in rural areas where energy costs can be a significant portion of household expenses. Pipelines also have a smaller environmental footprint compared to other transportations like trucking or rail. They reduce the number of heavy vehicles in areas in Wisconsin where the road infrastructure is unable to handle that increased demand and volume. They also decrease traffic congestion, lower accident risk, minimize overall road wear and tear. This not only makes travel safer for residents, but also reduces maintenance costs for local governments on roads. Transporting fuel through the line five pipeline is essential for agriculture and rural communities. This pipeline is an inevitable asset to farming offering a reliable, efficient, and sustainable solution to transporting the fuel essential for operating. It is also critical to rural Wisconsin by providing these areas with lower energy costs. Wisconsin Farm Bureau encourages the Army Corps of Engineers to approve line five pipeline relocation projects so that farming in rural Wisconsin can continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Ron Sporl, R.O.R.S.P.O.B.R.L. I'm a tribal member from the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians. I'm not speaking on behalf of my tribe, but I have a unique perspective here. As CEO, President of Hawk Industries, based out of Southern Wisconsin, we're able to view the line five relocation project from both a native perspective and an economic standpoint. As I will detail in testimony, I believe that the line five relocation should be approved because it removes the pipeline from Bad River's Tribe's reservation, provides our state and region jobs and energy all we need. Let me start by saying I support transitioning to green energy. As a member of my tribe, I share a connection to the earth, protect our waters and our land. We have a duty to look after and support it, working towards technologies to better care for our, our mother earth. But I also understand we cannot pull the energy rug away from our tribe, our friends, and our neighbors. We cannot overnight expect families who are struggling today to put food on our table to purchase an expensive electric vehicle or expensive geothermal system. We are not ready. We need to invest in and develop green solutions, but this transition will take time. We must care for one another through this transition. This all leads to the line five relocation project, which was proposed because the Bad River Tribe requested Enbridge remove a twelve-mile segment of the existing line five pipeline from its tribal lands. Out of respect of the tribe's request, Enbridge has proposed a forty-mile reroute we are here today to discuss. Not only has Enbridge respectfully engaged with Native American leadership and business orders, including myself, while selecting the least impactful, the least impactful route to the environment for this project, but a hundred percent of the landowners along the reroute have agreed to host the line five pipeline. If this project is not approved, everyone, including our native brothers and our sisters and communities around us, will suffer. Removing the product that flows through line five will not only increase gas and diesel prices, but it will lead to massive propane price spikes and shortages. That's propane that heats thousands of homes in northern Wisconsin, including many on the Bad River Reservation and our tribes and communities around us. I will end by saying that I assume everyone here today supports alternative energy. I know Enbridge does, and working towards a society with reduced emissions. However, most of us understand it will not happen overnight. In the meantime, Wisconsin families and small businesses will continue to rely on products and energy made possible by pipelines such as line five. For these reasons, I support the Enbridge line five relocation project and encourage you to approve this project without further delay. Enbridge, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Scott Suter, S.S.C.O.T.T.S.U.D.E.R. I serve as the President of the Wisconsin Paper Council. The Wisconsin Paper Council is the premier trade association which represents and advocates for Wisconsin's paper, pulp, and forestry industries. The papermaking industry is a key economic driver for our state, employing over thirty thousand highly skilled men and women, whose efforts continue to make us the number one papermaking state throughout the United States. Our industry is dedicated to global sustainability and strong environmental stewardship of our forests and our natural resources. Our nonpartisan statewide trade association strongly supports the reroute of line five, which aligns with our values of maintaining and protecting the environment. As we look through the lens of sound forestry practices, we want to commend and support the efforts that Enbridge is taking as part of their pipeline construction process. The route minimizes impact sensitive environmental areas of concern, as well as cultural resources in the area. The project itself is being developed in a manner that will minimize wetland, water body, threatened and endangered species, and archaeological and cultural resource impacts. We applaud Enbridge for their thoughtful approach to construction management planning in sensitive areas. In addition, their plans go beyond regulatory requirements and considerations with respect to the potential impacts placed on wetlands and watersheds within the construction progress. Enbridge has detailed assessments and plans in place for the conversion of select forested wetland habitats to emergent habitats, as well as maintaining overall wetland functions and values, and the compensatory litigation for both temporary and permanent wetland As you may know, the production of paper products is a highly intensive energy process. To stop line five, a vital source of energy for the entire region and the state, would be harmful to our members, the over thirty thousand men and women we employ, as well as our entire industry's supply chain. Wisconsin businesses and manufacturers depend on reliable and affordable energy to create jobs and produce the goods and services our state's, state needs to grow and thrive. The continued operation of line five is the safest and most efficient way to continue to move energy throughout our entire region and the energy that our economy needs to fuel our progress. Approving this project will help ensure a reliable, predictable, and affordable energy resource our members rely on every single day. Thank you so much for the opportunity to participate in this important process.
Thank you. Let me say something. We're going to take a break here in a second. The Colonel will announce it, and Senator Quinn will speak first, and then he'll be next. Forget all my things. Okay, but everybody in line, either stand there for five minutes or go away and come back in the same position. Sir?
Okay, thank you. Up next, we'll take a five-minute break and resume at 12:05.
What?
He's not here. I just go back. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, you want to go first? Yeah. We didn't either.
I work here. 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 I might bring it up to Bill next time.
Yeah. You're on camera.
Oh. You didn't stop it. I guess not.
No, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna head out.
That's my cameo.
I'm gonna head out in probably ten or fifteen.
So, I, uh...
Good afternoon, my name is Senator Romaine Quinn and I have the privilege to represent the 25th State Senate District, which encompasses the proposed reroute of Line 5. The 25th Senate District is very diverse in terms of our economy and our culture and especially our political opinions. That is why I try my best as Senator to focus on issues and solutions that benefit the greater community as a whole and that's something that we can hopefully build consensus on. That is why I'm here today in support of Line 5's reroute project. I'd like to share a couple reasons why. The $450 million investment into this infrastructure project is an important shot in the arm for our local and state economy. The state of Wisconsin is expected to net an additional $6.5 million in new tax revenue. The additional money to our general fund is an almost exact amount myself and Representative Green and Sappick who will be today, secured in the last budget for upgrades to our fish catcheries in Bayfield and rural, and new investment in Ammacan Falls and Patterson State Park. Unfortunately, that money was vetoed, but we need a priority again next budget cycle. At a local level, the small businesses in our area that will be needed to sustain the workers while they move through our district will get a much-needed economic boost, especially coming off of a hard winter. The additional sales tax collection from the service industry will also directly benefit our area counties to pay for the services that we all need and expect here in northern Wisconsin. As one of only a handful of northern Wisconsin Senators, it is a constant struggle to get the necessary infrastructure investment we need in the north. If this project is not approved, the thought of an additional 2,100 trucks on our roads to haul petroleum products is terrifying to me. Not only is this a public safety issue, we simply do not have the money to support this increased truck traffic on our infrastructure. We just don't. It is important to remember that eliminating one mode of transportation for petroleum products such as a pipeline does not actually decrease the demand for the product or stop the usage. All we would be doing is making it more expensive and less safe to move the product. And for our final comment, I would also like to point out the potential impact on our propane supplies. By shutting down Line 5, we will absolutely be disrupting our current propane market. Propane markets in and around the state of Wisconsin have a direct impact on the prices that we pay here. From residents like myself who heat our homes with propane, to our farmers that use it to dry their crops, we can't afford any disruptions. As our farmers and families continue to deal with the constant pain of inflation on their budgets, why would we risk throwing a wrench into our energy market? Thank you for allowing me to testify today in support of the reroute project. Thank you to everyone who is here today, making your opinion heard, whether you are for or against the project. While the transition to renewable energy is in full swing, we still need reliable and affordable energy along with safe infrastructure today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker. My name is Pat Nimmer, M.E.M.B.C. I am part owner of a special company, Elwin Services. Born and raised in Assam for 50-plus years, I'm a white dude, and I'm a Bad River tribal member. You've probably read and heard that they say some bad members don't want this. I know quite a few of that aren't for this, they're afraid to speak. As a business owner, I know a lot of businesses have a war for this, but they're afraid to speak because they're afraid it'll affect their businesses. I understand the side, the other side, they want it, and I wish they would understand why other people want that way. You guys have a tough decision because you gotta decide what's right for people, what's the best interest. And I think by doing Line 5, you know, is the best thing for everybody overall. So when you're sitting there deciding what way to go, look at what's the best interest for every, for the majority? You're gonna make some people mad, you're gonna make some people happy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Rinan Godrich. I'm here representing multiple treaty nations here, the women's indigenous network here, and I wanted to share some of our concerns that we have. Currently, I'm working with Native Black Medical Coalition of Great Lakes, Shibi Gled. Embridge says it's done an appropriate economic evaluation. So I wanted to speak a little bit about the economic evaluations and some of the talking, some of the main points that I have here. Embridge says it's done an appropriate economic evaluation and has determined that the reroute is economically viable and needed in the marketplace. However, the Army Corps engineers shouldn't take Embridge's work for it. The Corps has made incorrect assumptions about market demands for fossil fuel. The PGL, PLG Consulting and Impartial Energy Industry Consulting released documents, reports ranging of replacement options for Line 5 that are both commercially more valuable and operationally feasible. Embridge has been dangerously pumping oil to the northern Wisconsin illegally and trespass, violating the Bad Rivers ban sovereignty for more than 10 years. Now Embridge is trying to expand the pipeline and operate it for years to come, putting at risk the water, local communities, fish, and so much more with the threat of an oil spill. This reroute is not a solution. Line 5 carries 23 million gallons of crude oil each day and will continue to threaten the entire region. And Embridge's own analysis found that if Line 5 is shut down, gas prices would go up by less than a penny. The Army Corps should consider the marginal reductions in green gas emissions for each alternative, including the fact that a shutdown would likely result in a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions over time, which several studies do support. The Corps doesn't explain any close, any closer to the reservation leads to greater, also leads to greater impacts of environmental impacts.
Ma'am, I have to cut you off, she's three minutes.
I have three minutes, sir.
Yes, very good, thank you, though.
Okay, Shibi Gled.
You can put your, anything you want in writing outside, it's just that's going to be clear now. Next speaker.
My name is Tara Standler, S.T.A.R.A.H.S.T.A.N.D.L.E.R. I'm speaking now in the Army Corps of Engineers, but everybody here that is listening, I want to remind you that they are lying to you, but you already know that. Similarly to Keystone Pipeline, they promised 119,000 jobs post-instruction in its 35. These are not sustainable jobs, they will go away once the pipeline is completed, leaving research and for work. Since Line 5 was created in 1953, it has leaked at least a reported 1.1 million gallons of oil into the waterways. 1.1 million gallons. Adding 41 miles increases the amount of possibility for leaks, but wasting gas in all of this really seems to be a big deal to Embridge, considering the various fleets of F-250s that grow up here. I want to remind everybody that waterways are all connected, this will destroy our lives, but I'm not a scientist. The last science class I took was rocks for jogs in college. I can't say much, but I can say that I learned their topic that this is wrong. I can speak to something very important, and I want to talk about the impacts of police brutality. They're about to come and rock this community and everybody that participates in any kind of actions against this. In 2018, the Northern Lights Task Force was created to, and I quote, "coordinate planned resources in response to the Embridge Pipeline Re-Replacement Project." This task force was formed as a result of presentations put on by police departments in North Dakota who brutalized water protectors during the Dapple protests. Brutalization that included sprained protesters with water below freezing temperatures, mass arrests targeting journalists, and the use of less-than-leakable munitions known to cause severe amounts of damage to people. I witnessed this firsthand. Throughout the summer of 2021, we watched this same task force brutalize protesters, police departments from all across Minnesota, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, being the St. Paul District.
One minute.
Allowing this pipeline means you are allowing police brutality. Every leak, less-than-leak around that pierces skin and we pooled blood on the floor will be your fault. You will be responsible. You will be responsible for every grandmother who has bones broken and pain compliance hold, you will be responsible for it. If they kill someone, you will have to know that is on your conscience, every person that is looking into the camera as they are who realize that the police are looking at you because you had every power to stop it and you chose not to. You chose to allow them to poke at our waters, to brutalize our people, and to decide that this is what's more important to you. You have a choice.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Neil Sickich, N.E.I.L.S.I.C.K.I.C.H. I am business agent of Steamfitters Local 601, resident of Wisconsin Northwoods. I'm here to register my voice in favor of Line 5 relocation project. Line 5 relocation project to employ 700 union workers from pipe trades, labors, operating engineers, and teamsters. I firmly believe these highly skilled men and women are the best at what they do on the entire planet. We take pride in our work and call Wisconsin our home. Many of us are outdoors, men and women who fish, hunt, camp, hike along these very rivers and lakes that we will be talking about today. We will construct a safe pipeline because we have received the best training to do so and because we call this our home. As a lifelong steamfitter and business agent of Wisconsin Union that represents the union pipeline welders in our state, I want to address a claim we continue to hear concerning the jobs associated with the project. Those that claim these are temporary jobs are completely wrong. Pipeline workers, including our welders, spend years learning and mastering their trade. They have careers in the industry, they have families sustaining wages and benefits. These are anything but temporary jobs. In addition to my professional role at Steamfitters Local 601, I'm a resident of northern Wisconsin. In fact, I live down the road from here and a family member of mine has agreed to have the Line 5 relocation run through their property. So this is just not a professional manner for me, this is personal. While I do not expect those who live in the cities to understand propane is literally a matter of life or death for hundreds of thousands of Wisconsinites. Without propane in our tanks, we have no ability to heat our homes. Line 5 is an important part, important part of the propane supply chain. Moving natural gas liquids is needed to provide a large proportion of our regional propane supply. As a major propane supplier, as already warned, should the relocation project not move forward and should Line be shut down, our entire region will see crippling propane price hikes and major supply issues. These are real concerns impacting real people trying to keep their families warm during the cold winters. In summary, it is my personal and professional belief that Line 5 relocation project is not only needed, but will be a huge win for our state's residents and workers. I ask that the U.S. Army Corps promptly issues Embridge's permit to complete this final project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the next speaker, the Bad River, the Bad River Superiorship Chairman, Robert Blanchard.
Thank you. In conclusion, my name is Robert Blanchard, Bad River, Bad River Superiorship Chairman. My spirit name is Anaki Ogumah Wunduwa Ogumah Ezi, which is given to me by my elders. I come before you today to voice the Bad River ban stand under the proposed Embridge Line 5 reroute. I know I only have two minutes to speak in defense of our lands in an effort to further protection. These lands are not ours, they are loaned to us by our grandfathers and our grandmothers, lands we borrowed from our grandchildren, our great grandchildren. This could be known as many, many as Bad River, the building bank. Elers have passed that mountain, my people have as a medicine river. A place where wild rice grows and medicinal medicines grow, a place where we hunt and fish for past hundreds, if not thousands of years to feed up and heal our families. I must collect, I myself collect medicines from my family and healing from waters and Bad River. The white river upstream provides a plant that help me in western medicine and will or no effect on my sight. My grandfather used this for his sight to pass down to me, a sight to pass it down to my children and my grandchildren. It's a plant that interconnects with water, plants, species, and other plants. I've used many other medicines gathered from Bad River watershed, not just for myself, but for my elephants that need and want the medicine. Everything on this plant has a spirit, the animals, the water, the pipeline, even the grass we walk down has a spirit. We have spirit. We must treat and respect these spirits so not destroy them so that we may all, in my life, in over the Mosway, live a good life. It's an interconnection that is missed in this identification of wetlands or simply missing information. This is an example why I am encouraging people to comment, to insist the Army Corps District Office take harder look at impacts through the environmental impact statement and added requirement to our mother earth reserves. I encourage people to read regulations regarding the 404 permit. I encourage people to find out specific significant impacts for Corps to review with an environmental impact statement. Bad River watershed extends beyond our borders with reservation. The Line 5 reroute was proposed to run adjacent two tribal lands within ceded territories of the Tewbonisians, Wisconsin, and within Bad River watershed. So you see converting wetlands, exposing rocks, removing tree cover, and any flung out of birds or fractured building returns. And during the Line 3 construction, our oil spill will adversely, adversely affect our treaty protector rights to hunt and fish, gather of these lands and waterways for many, many years to come.
Sir, I have three minutes left.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Sister Roslyn Heil. I live here in Ashland. I'm a Franciscan sister who worked for the National Park Service for 20 years as an interpretive ranger. I soon found in that work, the best way to speak of the sacredness of the land of the national parks was to learn about how the first peoples lived on that land. I am speaking with a web of life. Digging up land, displacing land, plants, animals, people, moving wetlands. Biologists still do not know how to really redo a wetland. Earth has been at it for thousands and thousands of years, we haven't learned it yet. I don't know how to, we are called to respect our home. Our home is the land, the water, everything is connected. It is a web of life, and when you cut out one strand, you affect the whole. All earth is interconnected. When one part is poisoned, it affects the whole. When a toe or a finger isn't infected, the whole body is sick. We must not disrupt the ecosystem of this land. This land that is home for plants, trees, animals, our indigenous brothers and sisters, they are all our brothers and sisters. There are many alternatives to heating besides oil. We have become addicted to oil as the only way for a comfortable life. There are alternatives, we need the will to do it. The Embridge contract expired in 2013. They have not respected that contract. They have not respected their agreement in this land proposition for the pipeline. If they can't accept that, if they can't respect that, how can we trust their work and their research that says this is safe? We must look for alternatives, we must use our willpower to find alternative ways for heat and comfort for our lives, our children, our grandchildren, down the seven generations. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ann, A-N-N-O-E, Rosenquist. I'm Swedish. I wish I was named American, but I'm not, and I stand for Bad River. I live up in Bayfield, I'm an organic farmer, I'm outside all day long, sun up, sun down, working, and this is not a good time for a hearing. This is when we're planting. We had a tough winter, it was 30 degrees more than it usually is. The Arctic is melting, the glaciers are melting. We don't have much time on this planet. I mean, why are we doing stuff like this? It doesn't make any sense. We burn wood, I drive a Geo Metro, it gets 50 miles per gallon because no current vehicles get that kind of mileage. I have, I'm totally off-grid, so we have the sun and the wind, even with the farms, we're able to run like five freezers in the middle of the summer, which is kind of a lot of energy, and we're not tied at all to the grid. And we don't need propane to heat because we have wood. I just, I just don't understand, if you look at the map and you look at all those watersheds where this reroute is going to go, and along the whole section, there's so many rivers and so many watersheds, and if you've ever witnessed how they drill down and, oh oops, you know, they bring up fracking stuff or whatever, it's not, it's not a good thing. And it's, and if you've ever seen some of the areas along here, it's the most pristine part of the entire United States. It's a, it's a beautiful area. Our Lake Superior is one of the cleanest ever, even though, you know, we have PIFAs coming down on us and we have microplastics and everything, but at least we are cleaner than most of the rest of the United States. Let's preserve this. If they maybe dig up the entire pipeline, because it is 71 years old, and if you dug it up and got rid of it, there would be many, many jobs. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jill Ferguson, F.E.R.G.U.S.O.N. I'm better known to most people in this room as badass grandma. I'm a water protector from Line 3, arrested three times, third time seriously injured for protecting the water, for protecting the Mississippi. I ask myself every day, what country am I in now? I'm 71, the same age as this pipeline, and I know how I feel at 71. So that pipeline should not be operational, should be shut down. It should not, there should not be models of pipeline added to it. So I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of concerns. You all know, as well as we know, that your report is nonsense. It's flawed, it's incomplete, it's lies, it's all based on Embridge propaganda. Lots of colored brochures here, lots, "Embridge Safety 24/7/365." No, you're not, I know some of my friends here who walk the line, who go out in canoes to look for it. You don't find it, they find it, and they report on it. In fact, Embridge had a spill in Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, that's, you know, somehow, you know, people don't even talk about that one, and for, for over a year, they left it unreported. This company is not safe. They have an abysmal history. I have pages and pages and documented pages. These are all lawsuits for Embridge and for Michaels. They have an abysmal environmental record. They are reckless, they couldn't care less what they do to the environment, to people or planet. I also want to know why, from top to bottom, from our president, right on down the line, we are behaving in a Canada-first position. This pipeline goes, becomes from Canada- I also want to know why, from top to bottom, from our president, right on down the line, we are behaving in a Canada-first position. This, this pipeline goes, becomes from Canada to Canada for Canada. Wisconsin doesn't get any of this product. Why are we willing to take the 100% of the risk? What are you all getting in exchange for that? Because it doesn't register anywhere in my brain that you would allow this. Water, fresh water is a non-renewable resource that most of the world would give anything to have. What's going to happen when, when, when we, when we, when we move that? And it's going to happen. Look at Waukesha. I don't know how many of you know about Waukesha, I'm from Milwaukee. They just got done taking, making pipeline from Lake Michigan out to, you know, 30 miles to Waukesha because they destroyed their fresh water. What is everybody else going to do? So I just want to say this is not worth, it is not worth, it is not worth the risk. This should be shut down. Why in the world you even bother to take almost three years to go through this process is, is, is absolutely beyond me. And, and you're taking a gamble with water. You've made water a commodity and you're all part of that. You're all part of that. So when your kids or your grandkids come to you and say, where were you? What did you do? Did you do anything to stop it? Which side were you on? Because we're on sides. This whole country's on the sides.
I'm a kind of broke, so give me one more minute, please.
Sure, fine. And, and to those of you who, who are, who are pro this pipeline, I don't know how or, or why, except for money. Because it makes no sense whatsoever. Because it is, water is life, is not a hashtag. It's a fact. It's a fact for everything. And I know the indigenous people who've, who've sold out. You know, I've been hanging around with, with a lot of my indigenous friends for many, many years now. And I keep hearing this statement, be in a good way. Be in a good way. You call this being in a good way?
Ma'am, I need you to finish first.
You want me to do that?
I've got one, three minutes, but I'm sorry.
Okay.
Please finish up real quick.
Okay, so again, I, I, I want to know why we are going by this 1977 treaty, which allows an unobstructed access to our pristine land. Why are we doing that? That makes no sense. It makes no sense, none whatsoever. And, you know, I, I, my, my taxes go to pay y'all's salary. You know, Canada doesn't pay your salaries unless you get it under the table and go like, envelope or stop or something.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Last thing I want to see here is one of these signs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next speaker.
My name is Russell Bennett, R-U double S, E double L, B-E double N, E double T. I'm here because I have 35 years of experience working as a registered nurse in community mental health and I successfully helped unionize our workplace. There is a deep and growing despair about our climate future with numerous studies to back this up. One example is a survey of 10,000 people aged 16 to 25. They found that three quarters of those surveyed thought the future regarding the climate was frightening. Over half think that humanity is doomed. These young people feel betrayed. They feel ignored and abandoned by politicians. They feel bewildered by the government's failure to act. All of this is not even to, not even taking into account the mental health effects of any specific coming weather events and it doesn't touch on the massive physical health costs of climate chaos. Dr. Jonathan Pats of the University of Wisconsin has clearly documented the health cost of our current fossil fuel economy as well as the profound health effects and financial savings that would ensue from moving away from such an economy. I can imagine that some of you might say that it is not within the purview of your agency to address such concerns. But for the Corps to ignore the big picture, to hew to something like we've always done it this way, would be the equivalent of this agency merely rearranging the neckchairs on the Ethological Titanic. The task, of course, now is for all of us to acknowledge the big picture, to acknowledge the urgency, then act accordingly as we face an epic disaster unlike any other in human history. Dr. Martin Luther King said, quote, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Here's to hoping the Corps rises to the occasion and does its part in not looking away from the big picture, that you make a decision regarding Line 5 that does right by all those to come, those who did nothing to create this problem but have everything to lose. One minute, putting hope. Thank you.
I'll let you catch up here. Okay.
My name is Laura Briedell, L-A-U-R-A-B-R-I-D-E-L-L. Thank you for hearing comments today. People rarely think about pipelines. They run quietly underground. They operate 24 hours a day. The product pipeline and transport is essential to help people heat homes and businesses. If the product isn't moved in pipeline systems, it finds other ways to move, such as rail and truck. Moving energy this way is far more impactful to local residents and carries a higher risk of environmental impacts. Enbridge has been in Wisconsin for 75 years operating this critical infrastructure. This route has been very thoroughly surveyed and selected with the purpose of avoiding sensitive resources and areas. Its design has been mindfully planned to respect impacts on wetlands and water bodies. The project will not only be an improvement in environmental impact, it will be a great economic boost. This is a $450 million privately funded project with a Wisconsin-based general contractor and 700 families sustaining union construction jobs. Enbridge has also made a commitment that 10% of the project budget spent specifically with native-owned businesses, including hiring and training tribal members. This reroute, reroute project is needed and I encourage you to continue this process forward so that this can be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Meg Paulino, M-E-G-P-A-U-L-I-N-O. Today I stand here as an ardent host and heritage curator for the Franciscans and Sisters of Professional Adoration. I also stand as a mother and grandmother. I have had a unique experience serving our military as a transportation officer. In that role, I was assigned the role to be the hazmat, which is the hazardous materials handler for my position. So I have worked in this field. My proposal through this, through the pipeline is I just, I feel that after my family's decided to settle here, this was our last case, that we got, we got to stay up. We love Wisconsin and we decided to stay in this area. The proposal of this pipeline through Wisconsin's waterways is not just a matter of economics. It's not just a matter of convenience. It's a dire threat to our way of life. As someone who has witnessed catastrophic consequences of environmental disasters, I can attest to the grave risks of such a pipeline. When a railcar or a tractor trailer goes over, the, the damage is contained. When a pipeline has an issue, it continues and can go through years before it's discovered. The damage is much more important. An oil spill in these delicate ecosystems would be nothing short of an ecological apocalypse, decimating wildlife, poisoning our water supply and irreparably harming the flora and the fauna as well as the well-being of each individual person. I know too well the immense challenges and the costs they're associated with cleaning up such a disaster and often, way too often, the damage is irreversible. Furthermore, the construction and operation of this pipeline would only exacerbate the climate crisis that we are currently facing. We cannot continue to rely on fossil fuels. Instead of investing in outdated and harmful infrastructure, we should prioritize our renewable energy sources that are sustainable, clean and safe for the planet, safe for future generations. Let us not sacrifice the health of our environment and our communities for short-term gains. I urge you to join me in standing against the proposed pipeline and advocating for a future that prioritizes environmental stewardship and the well-being of all living things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Peter Rasmussen, P-E-T-E-R-A-S-M-U-S-S-E-N. I live in Marigot, Wisconsin. I live just south of here. Proposed Dream Pipeline would cross Silver Creek just up from my house. I think that this hearing is, in a lot of ways, absurd because a company like Enbridge really shouldn't be trusted at all. I wonder how with them trespassing through my neighbor Bad River's land for years and years on end, where if I were trespassing on anybody's land for years and years and years, the sheriff would certainly, probably at some point lock me up. But these guys get to keep doing it and you guys get to entertain them rerouting a pipeline to an ancient old pipeline. You've watched them breach aquifers in Minnesota within the last few years and then are going to depend on their data about aquifers in my area? We live in a freshwater stronghold. We have artesian wells bubbling up a mile from my house that I know you guys don't understand. And I know that that hydrology is not understood by anybody. And so you guys are responsible for that. And so if you let Enbridge do this, knowing that they're vagrant, vagrant lawbreakers, they're responsible for the largest oil spill of a pipeline in the United States. They are a Canadian company taking Canadian oil from Canada to Canada through my backyard. And I'm going to protect my backyard. And as far as horizontal drilling goes, nobody regulates it. So while you guys get to regulate the White River, the hundred of other horizontal drills that they're going to do, nobody regulates. The DNR doesn't do it because they regulate stream beds. You guys don't do it because you only deal with the section of the White River. So that's left it up to me and my neighbors to protect ourselves. Because by the very nature of you guys entertaining this, it shows me that, that the decision is made. I mean, it should be laughed out of the, you should, you know, it should just be like, you're going to do what? You're going to hook up a new line to a 70-year-old line that was supposed to be retired 50 years ago from a company that we can't trust? Please do the right thing and deny this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Cory Starr, C-O-R-E-Y-S-T-A-R-R. I serve as the international representative for the Labor's International Union in North America. Launa has 550,000 members between the United States and Canada. Members of our union have extensive experience working on critical infrastructures like your proposed Line 5 relocation project. Our union has a strong relationship with Michaels and has been selected, that has been selected as the mainline construction contractor for the $450 million project. The project labor agreement has been signed by my union as well as the International Union of Operating Engineers, International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the United Association of Plumbers and Fitters. The economic impact on this project will be massive and will result in 700 great paying union jobs. Our job, these jobs employ local Wisconsin workers who will take the paychecks they earn and spend them in their own communities. This will create an added benefit for local businesses and residents throughout Northern Wisconsin. The Wisconsin laborers are engaged with community-based organizations and other partners who work with historically underserved communities. And this project will invest significant resources to work with native-owned business, including training and hiring of tribal members to work on this project. My union and other unions who will be working on this project have, all have world-class skills and safety training that will help ensure this complicated project will be done safely while protecting Wisconsin waterways and natural resources, while also guaranteeing that Northern Wisconsin has access to fuel to heat our homes and businesses. This project will have a massive impact for current and future members of my union. Ensure that we have safe and steady supply of energy and I would like to thank the Corps of Engineers for the opportunity to speak on this important project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Eric Sorensen, E-R-R-I-S-E-N, National Guard, 310, 310. American author Ambrose Bierce defined a corporation as a ingenious device for acquiring individual profit without individual responsibility. Enbridge, with their many shell corporations and false fronts, is the embodiment of this definition with their narrow focus to keep profits flowing daily. They chose to deal with American governments rather than their own Canadian authorities because they see us as more compliant. A few campaign contributions here and there spread some money to cash-starved communities, literally a drop in the pipeline of profits flowing through Line 5. We're not here to talk about that. We will hear much testimony about the safety and efficiency of pipelines, but certainly the Corps understands that there is not a single plan in place for removing them as if they are now a permanent part of our landscape and removing them is an SEP, somebody else's property. We're not here to talk about that. Enbridge is leased to use the sovereign nation of Bad River Tribe, which should not have expired years ago. Yet they have continued to operate illegally since that time, ignoring federal court orders to decommission the pipeline as well as an order from the state government of Michigan to remove Line 5 from the local Mackinac Streets. Having lost in the courts, their strategy is to delay it for as long as they can keep the profits flowing. We're not here to talk about that. They suggested reroute for Line 5 runs through a portion of the Pinocchio Hills, which was hit with a 1,000-year flood eight years ago and a 500-year flood two years ago. Perhaps no one needs to recalibrate. It crosses innumerable streams and rivers, including the Brunzo Islands, portions of which are designated wild and scenic. As the Corps described in your report on the attempted iron mine, the Pinocches are riddled with springs and seams of groundwater and any attempt to install a pipeline under these waters would cause irreparable harm to pristine trout catcheries. We're not here to talk about that. We sit on the shores of the greatest body of fresh water on our continent. Those of us who reside in the basin breathe the water vapor and carry the lake in our bodies. We are all connected to the lake and to each other. This pipeline poses an inevitable, unacceptable threat to the water's regulatory and regulatory basis. It should never have been built in the first place. It is operating illegally. There are threats of breach as we speak. And the sooner you can issue a finding that will result in this foreign monstrosity being shut down and removed, the better we will breathe until the next attempted assault on our home. No dollars for water.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sheriff Michael, C-H-E-L-L, O-W-A-N-T-L-E. I'm the executive director of the Wisconsin Propane Gas Association. We understand the concerns raised by those who oppose by Line 5, but with a 99.9% safety record, I feel the bigger picture to consider is the broader implications of shutting down this critical infrastructure. Propane supply in Wisconsin and the greater Midwest region is already balanced on a very delicate scale. The removal of Line 5 would severely disrupt the balance leading to significant consequences. The pipeline is a vital artery in transportation of propane and its closure would jeopardize the energy and security of 280,000 homes, businesses, farms that rely on this resource, especially during our harsh winter months. Line 5 is subject to stringent safety protocols and continuous monitoring to minimize environmental risks. Ongoing efforts to upgrade and maintain a pipeline ensures that it operates safely. Line 5 plays an indispensable role in ensuring stability and reliability in energy in Wisconsin. I understand it would take over 90 transports an hour to cover the supply that comes through Line 5. This alternative not only higher carbon footprint, but also increases the risk of accidents and spills. Interruptions of the supply would lead to higher energy costs, placing the financial burdens on those who use propane. Moreover, during the peak winter, events during the winter months, shortages could leave homes without heat, risking the health and safety of Wisconsinites. MISO, Mid-Continent Independent Supply Operator, reports that the electrical grid in the Midwest and throughout the central United States is at a high-risk status. Without propane, we would be pushing more energy demand onto the grid with additional detrimental results. By keeping Line 5, we can continue to ensure that our communities are accessible to stable and reliable energy source. It is essential for maintaining the quality of life, especially in rural areas where alternatives are limited. There is a peace of mind that comes from knowing that there is secure supply of propane and that cannot be overstated. It allows our families to stay warm, businesses to operate smoothly, and our farmers to keep their livestock warm, crops dry and equipment running. Please save Line 5. Please save Line 5. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
I am Jane Combeau, J-A-N-E-C-O-M-B-A-U, and I am here today with my colleagues from the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration, my employer headquartered in Wisconsin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am asking you to oppose Enbridge's Line 5 permit. We can only have a healthy home with clean water and clean air. We can only have a future with land that is sustainable to live on. We can't live for now and disregard the future. We have the technology to heat our homes and schools. We need to think about future generations and families. We are an intergenerational group gathered here today. Let's own our responsibility to share our resources with our children's children and their children and their children. The proposed expansion is not a solution, but a distraction. It diverts attention from the fundamental issue. We should be transitioning away from fossil fuels, not investing in infrastructure that locks us into decades more of their use. As a lover of Wisconsin's wild places, many that I've hiked with my children, let's prioritize the protection of our natural resources. We have one lake superior. Let's protect her. Thank you for listening. I hope you'll consider these points and do good work for the common good. Thank you.
One minute. Next speaker.
Deanna Backles, D-E-N-A-B-A-K-L-E-S. I'm with the Wisconsin Network for Peace and Justice. There comes a time when critical thinking people must admit that the course of exploitation and usury is no longer viable. And when those people come to that conclusion, it's vital they ensure a change of course that is just, equitable, and sound. Make no mistake, that's why so many of us are here or are writing to you, and our resistance is growing and will continue to grow. Both the current Line 5 and the proposed Line 5 expansion pose potential threats to drinking water and ecosystems. Both violate tribal rights. Line 5 is operating nearly twenty years past its lifespan, and we know the Great Lakes holds ninety-five percent of the surface freshwater in the United States. A pipeline breach is catastrophic. These facts alone should be enough to end the discussion and the existence of Line 5 and its reroute. But too many of us still believe the propaganda of the oil industry and are frightened about making a change in course. You, the Army Corps, have an enormous responsibility to provide stop-gap measures and allow clear thinking to prevail. By ordering a federal environmental impact statement for all portions of Line 5 within your jurisdiction, you can educate the public on the true risks of this pipeline. By reviewing Enbridge's record of misrepresenting risks, violating permits, spilling oil, and covering up environmental damage, you can counter the lack of oversight and enforcement that has allowed injustices to prevail. You have the opportunity and the responsibility to reverse the lack of knowledge that has led to this needless destruction of our environment. Line 5 threatens the entire region. Shutting down Line 5 would create the opportunity for all of us to justly transition to safer, more sustainable energy. And as I said before, our resistance is growing and will continue to. I urge you to help us. Thank you.
Next speaker, and the speaker after that will be the last one until we take a break. Your next, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dean Julien, D-E-A-N-J-U-L-I-E-N. I'm a steam fitter and business agent for Steam Fitters Level 601. As a business agent with 601, I get to work with both our members as well as our contractors, union contractors. Together, these workers and contractors build the infrastructure that allow our country to function. Our members are very proud of the training and work they do. Our local, as well as the Wisconsin Pipe Trades Association, fully support the Line 5 relocation project. I understand and the serenity and the beauty of northern Wisconsin, as my grandfather was an archer or captain on the Great Lakes. My father was born and raised in Iron River, which is roughly forty miles west of here. I have spent a good portion of my life as an outdoorsman, both hunting and fishing in this area, so I do know of that. The Enbridge Line 5 relocation project will employ highly skilled welders trained right here in Wisconsin and have training facilities in Milwaukee and Madison. These welders spend thousands of hours in initial training, in addition to fulfilling career-long requirements for continued education. They are highly educated, highly trained welders and fitters before even touching a single pipeline joint. One myth that needs to be called out is that the pipeline jobs are temporary jobs. Frankly, this is kind of an insulting characterization we often hear by those opposing infrastructure projects in general. These pipeline workers are no different than an accountant or a lawyer. They go from project to project, maintaining full-time employment, making six-figure salaries, and full benefits, including a robust retirement. They are educated just as much as any professional holding a postgraduate degree and are considered some of the top workers in their industry in the world.
One minute, sir.
In short, these are lifelong, family-sustaining jobs that are anything but temporary. In my career, I have been involved in numerous Enbridge projects and can personally attest to the commitment to the workers on the projects, their commitment to designing, constructing, and operating safe pipelines, and the continued work to be good environmental stewards. This project is no different. As anyone who experienced in this industry can attest, the Line 5 relocation project has been designed to create the smallest environmental footprint possible, using technology and techniques that will ensure the environment will be left undisturbed whenever possible. This includes the use of cutting-edge horizontal drilling. It is my opinion, and the opinion of nearly ten thousand Pipe Trades members of our international union, that we represent, that the Line 5 location should move forward and that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers should approve the necessary permits to begin construction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker and last speaker before the break.
Hi, my name is Megan Sefateh, M-E-G-A-N-S-F-E-I-E-L-B-A-U-E-R-S-A-N-D-A-T-E. I've listened to the draft, other projects known in northern Wisconsin the last six years and the ones set up before them. I believe that the current draft's environmental assessment is incomplete and underestimates the impact of the proposed pipeline reroute, both environmentally and culturally. I think that we should be, not move forward with this pipeline reroute, and if the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are not prepared to make that decision today, we go back and do a complete environmental impact statement. Climate change is ravaging our planet, so the government must conduct a detailed and thorough environmental analysis for any project that further invests in this country's fossil fuels. Based on what I've seen online and in the overview of public involvement in the draft statement, there doesn't appear to be a version of the document in languages other than English. There's a large document A in mom population in Wisconsin, plus no documents clearly have been provided in the Midwest. Even today, no instruction for these sessions have been provided in languages other than English. Additionally, large mainstream environmental organizations in Wisconsin tend to be very white, which means the majority of the analyses or guides to the draft document are also all in English. I don't think an environmental justice analysis is possible when materials are not presented in multiple languages. It makes it clear to me that outreach not only has only been done to communities who fit into what some people think Wisconsin looks like and who they think would care about this issue. Compensating waterway doesn't limit its impact to contained area. Water knows no borders. Borders are something created by colonizers. This pipeline reroute will impact the entire area in generations to come. Enbridge has several leaks occur across Line 3 and Line 5. Enbridge continues to run, or continue to run, a Line 5 pipeline through Bad River and even actively hold them to stop. Bad River set out of the watershed, and Enbridge then proposes reroute. To me, Enbridge is not an entity I would trust. Would you trust the word of a person who has messed up on the job and doesn't honor the terms of your agreement? There's talk of all the jobs that could happen, but historically pipelines have very few terms of jobs. Only this reroute will not move us into a more darned and sound future. It will only further push in the past, invested in systems of energy that only destroy our planet and works to undermine indigenous communities. I understand that disrupting the markets is scary, and I'm not going to pretend like I know what life, you probably can and all that. I know I'm city folk to a lot of you, but I do know that the same landlords and owners who are raising our rent and raising the rent of all my community members are same people who are buying up land up here and pushing up costs for y'all up north. We are in this together. It is the people, familiar and multinational corporations like Enbridge and the U.S. government, for repeatedly allowing people and companies with money to ravage the lives of low-income folks and destroy small businesses. So it's time to stand up and say no more to problems. We want clean energy, and we want it now to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we take a break, I want to make a little announcement. So, we have to focus on the webex. You have to understand that if you want to speak, you have to be here. You can't do in a webex, okay? And then, going through about equipment, this is great. Here, basically, hearing to the rules. So we're going to do probably another draw eventually to get more speakers and all that, but they have to be present to actually speak. So, sorry.
Thank you. Up next, we'll take a fifteen-minute break, and we'll resume at one fifteen. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The fifteen-minute break is concluded and the hearing is now in session.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, you may move on.
Hey, is my adapter... Yes, so. My name is Tom Galazin. G-A-L-A-Z-E-N. Lifelong resident of Bigfoot County. Followed by choice and by occupation.
Oops. That it? Oops. Is that it?
Hanging around during the break, I noticed that Andy Propp, the graph here, he signed, no exit. And I think that describes a lot of the situation here. The pipeline goes through and if there's problems here or anywhere along the other segments of the pipeline, for a lot of, a lot of people and a lot of organisms, there's no exit. There's no real cleanup of groundwater and wastewater and no saving a lot of organisms that are drenched in oil and gas.
Sure. Wait, that'd take just a few minutes walking around.
I've got, yes, a few seat of pants, so comments to make today. But I think they're important. I've been off-grid a couple of years since nineteen eighty-two now, okay? And I'm not cold in the winter. And I don't alter none of electricity. And I use solar and I heat my place with wood, cook with wood and have hot water heated with wood. And I run some refrigerators and freezers. I do a lot of refrigeration and freezing of stuff to sell from my farm. And I've thought about things a lot over the years because we have the energy. That's why even before Jane Hansen made his, his famed speech about climate change in nineteen eighty-eight. I was always off-grid and it's a serious matter. Some people have pointed to the tar sands development and exploitation as game over to the climate. And I think that's largely accurate. But here's a chance for us to take a step back and to shut off some of this tar sands fuel that's coming and fueling an environmental and climate crisis. And I think you should look clearly and completely at that. Some other things that I think should be mentioned. Since I tried to conserve a lot of energy in my first life, I got GeoMetta right on. It's nineteen ninety vintage. And I'm getting kind of old, but I gotta get a muscle on that and put a muscle on that. And hopped in for next week.
Sorry, I'll cut you off. About three minutes.
About three minutes. Including my walking time.
The walking time, yes. And this time.
Well, okay. I'm gonna stop this written comment, but I'm sure you're like, yeah, you can separate it from it now. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Zee Leemke. My grandma Ken was one of the Hawkins Lakey Smiths. I was born in Madison. I have a vacation cabin halfway between here and Cable that I rented at cost to beat a little monster, the beautiful Northwoods, which is, I was switching from propane to heat pump. It's not that expensive. It's more efficient over time. I live in the ludes, the Christmas city of the north, where we did not have winter this year. I'm the widow of Carl Sack, a cartographer, outdoorsman, father. I would like to read you this message Carl wrote to Enbridge shortly before he died, a couple of months ago. He wrote, "You stole my winter. You stole the fun of cross-country skiing through sparkly crystal air. You stole the protective blanket of snow for our spring wildflowers, the water for our streams, the rest for our verges and spruce trees, the ice from our ice fish oven, and the pure, unyielding cold from our greatest lake." Am I correct? Enbridge will make the case that the risk of poisoning the water is worth it because the flow of water is necessary. It isn't. You can add energy other ways. There is no other way to have winter and no way to call it back once it's gone. I would like Carl's sons to ski book across the bay someday, like their father did for twenty years, until this year when his mummy trout should come ashore. And begging you, this requires full environmental impact statement. But so deeply needed when you look at the mouse, Carl made the show of full water shots. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Emily Pritzko. E-M-I-L-Y. E-R-I-P-Z-K-O-W. I'm the executive director of the Wisconsin Mountain Trades Council. Wisconsin Mountain Trades is a coalition of labor unions that represent more than forty-five thousand skilled tradespeople across the state of Wisconsin, but you've heard from many of them already speaking up here today. We're established to advocate for the rights and the interests of workers in the construction industry. And we focus on promoting fair wages, safe working conditions, and quality training programs. We collaborate with local governments, contractors, and other stakeholders to ensure that the construction projects we work on adhere to high standards and benefit the community economically and socially. In that capacity, I'm here to speak in favor of the Line Five reroute project and its significance for our state particularly as it relates to the careers and employment of our union workers. While the Line Five reroute project allows this piece of critical energy infrastructure to continue to operate safely in Wisconsin as it has done since nineteen fifty-three, it also presents a generational opportunity to boost local employment and to put our miners to work. Firstly, the reroute project is set to generate a substantial number of construction jobs, as other speakers have covered. The project will support an estimated seven hundred family sustaining constructions through years, hired largely from the regions of union halls, and it will provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin communities. With an estimated four hundred and fifty million dollar cost, this project requires a diverse range of skills from all trades. This influx of job opportunities will not only benefit those directly employed by the project, but also add hundreds of thirty-five million dollars in economic impact to the state. Moreover, the construction jobs created by the Line Five reroute project are not, as others have shown, quote-unquote temporary positions. Many of these roles will extend over years to come, providing steady employment and financial stability for countless families in northern Wisconsin. This long-term employment will allow our workers to gain valuable experience and skills, further enhancing their career prospects in the construction industry of our state. In conclusion, the Line Five reroute project is not just a necessary infrastructure for our state. It means sustained construction careers, prioritizing local hiring, investing in training, and building a skilled workforce. This project will deliver lasting economic benefits that extend far beyond its limitation. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is David Lohr. D-A-D-I-D. And I'm here today representing Michael's Pipeline. We are a contractor that's been selected to do this project and its permits have been approved. Michael's Pipeline is one of the largest family-owned, privately-owned construction companies in North America and we're based here in Wisconsin. We've been in business since nineteen fifty-nine. Our core values, just some of our core values are safety, number one. Not only safety for the people that work for us, but also safety to the environment and the community that we work in. We also believe strongly in the S.P., environmental, social government. We believe in a workforce that adds inclusion, whether it's our tribal partners or whether it's people from all walks of life. We believe very strongly in our commitment to the environment. Not only do we come in and understand that we are going to be guests in different communities, when we leave a project, we're going to leave it in as good a shape, if not better than when we found it. I am a resident of northern Wisconsin. I live just a few miles down the road to the west of here. I also live on the shores of Lake Superior and recognize that the draft environmental study that's been mounted more than adequately. This project has been studied for over three years. It has been shown that the impact to the community and to the watershed could be minimal and not. And I urge you to continue forward with this project because we work every single day doing this stuff with our union partners. And our union partners are the most skilled, most trained, most qualified people in the United States to perform this work. And out of personal note, I want everybody in this room to know that I live right down there on Enbridge, right at, it's a hundred and fifty-eight feet to the west of my property line. Enbridge is a good name. They have taken care of our community. They keep, make sure that everything works and everything is running as the way it's supposed to. So with that, again, I would like to thank you guys very much for giving me the opportunity to stand before you and urge you to go ahead and grant this permit to make sure that the Line Five continues to operate in a safe and efficient manner. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Chad Ward. C-H-A-D-W-A-R-D. Business agent with Team Search Local Three Forty-Six out of Duluth, Minnesota, who is representative of a wide variety of industries. Truck drivers, public sector employees, dock workers, warehouse workers, construction, men in the pipeline industry, UPS, police officers, office staff, to name a few, in northwest Wisconsin and northern Minnesota. We asked the US Army Corps of Engineers to promptly process and approve the necessary permit for the Line Five reroute project. We support the Line Five reroute project because doing so will help ensure uninterrupted delivery of the energy supply we need to fuel our industries, businesses, schools, and homes. As referenced in the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Draft Environment Impact Statement, a shutdown of the Line Five will drastically impact the supply of energy and petroleum products such as propane in parts of the Midwest, including Wisconsin. In addition, the consumer cost of propane would surely skyrocket, impacting people's ability to heat their homes and businesses and severely impacting the regional economy in both the short and long term. The Line Five relocation project truly is a generational infrastructure project right here in our backyard. And thank you to Enbridge and Michael's Pipeline and the four labor unions that participate in this industry. On signing the project labor agreement, it will serve as an opportunity for all of our men and women who represent the individual crafts to be able to continue working in an industry that they built a career on. These jobs are located right here and will afford our members to gain a respectful wage and benefit package that will be turned over seven times within these local communities, positively impacting families and the community members in northern Wisconsin. In addition, I think of the indirect project benefits that would be felt with the construction Line Five relocation. Those working on the Line Five project would be supporting the local economy by visiting grocery stores, retail outlets, and the activity would spur additional economic growth locally, as I imagine. Another point about Line Five is not only does it continue to serve our energy demands, but also pipelines remain the safest transportation method to deliver the energy we need. Line Five won't increase the flow of product, nor does it represent new oil extraction. It is a simple forty-one mile relocation of an existing pipeline infrastructure as requested by the Bad River Band leadership. And this project will allow this piece of critical energy infrastructure to continue to safely operate in Wisconsin as it has done since nineteen fifty-three. For these reasons and more, Team Search Local Three Forty-Six requests your approval and/or permits for construction. Thank you for your longening comments.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker.
First, I want to thank the Army Corps of Engineers for holding this hearing. My name is Mark Rosenbaum, I'm from Madison, Wisconsin. I'm a retired emergency room nurse. I spent many years promoting public health. I've often spoken of human rights, for instance, the right to healthcare, clean water. But today what I want to talk about is obligations. The obligation to defend and protect the land and all things that are of it. I ask that you deny any permit that would allow Line Five to continue in Wisconsin. I am concerned that the Army Corps deal with the reality of who and what Enbridge is before entrusting them with something as precious as our water and our future. Enbridge has a violent and arrogant track record that speaks for itself. It spends millions to create a social license. It lobbies, it buys and divides communities. It uses its money and influence to push state legislatures to criminalize nonviolent protests and opposition to its actions. Enbridge makes promises it has no intention of keeping in South Dakota where it invested in the Dakota Access Pipeline that was responsible for paramilitary violence against nonviolent protesters. In northern Minnesota, Enbridge virtually bought and militarized police departments that arrested over one thousand people. Once granted permits for Line Three, Enbridge simply did as it pleased, fracking twenty-eight rivers, piercing four aquifers, and using water as it chose. The environmental devastation Enbridge caused in Minnesota speaks for itself, along with a litany of pipeline ruptures and toxic spills. Oil spills in Wisconsin would threaten the Great Lakes and a hundred and eighty-six waterways. Line Five has already spilled over one point one million gallons of oil. Enbridge is responsible for some of the largest inland oil spills in the United States, including one million gallons in the Kalamazoo, Michigan in twenty-ten, one point seven million gallons in nineteen ninety-one in the Prairie River and Grand Rapids, Minnesota.
One minute.
The proposed route of Line Five crosses multiple rivers that make up the watershed, the Lake Superior. Enbridge and its supporters state that they have respected the wishes of the Bad River Chippewa. That's simply not true. Enbridge has a history of total disregard for indigenous sovereignty. To suggest that upholding the existing, updating the existing line to enable tar sands to flow and be burned for many more years does not affect climate change, is simply a lie. We are facing an existential crisis with climate change. We have an obligation to act. In Wisconsin, that means stopping Line Five. Speaking on behalf of my children, my grandchildren's future, I ask that you deny this permit. Do not sell their future to the last, most expensive tar sands pipeline in history. Their record speaks for itself.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, this is Flora Nels, L A U R A, N E T T, L E S. And I'm a Franciscan sister of perpetual abration, as well as a university professor. I've been hearing and reading a lot about how safe this project is going to be. But the truth is, we don't really know that, and we cannot make that claim fully. Remember, every oil spill was part of a safe process at one time. We know that Line Five has already failed thirty-five times. We know that Enbridge itself has been responsible for some of the largest bad oil spills, despite claims of safety. And we know that discharge from this project will damage the ecosystem, no matter the degree to which we label it, or the money that we throw at it. But it's what we don't know that scares me the most. Hoping, wishing, and taking educated, well-educated guesses is not enough to put our water, our ecosystem, and our lives at risk. So I'm here to ask you to do two things today. First, if you would do further assessments, including a water evaluation that includes tribal input. I would appreciate that. And second, if you cannot in any way guarantee us the safety of this line, please say no to the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Don Roberts. I'm a concerned citizen. My, uh, name is Don, D O N, R O B, R E S. And this is Bodhi, he's my, uh, he's my buddy. Uh, seventy foot, I've looked around and I've noticed quite a few people. I don't know anybody here, but I can tell you I've probably worked alongside of guys very similar to what I see on the ground here. And I've worked hard all my life, and I, I now, what I see is, it hurts. It hurts because we want to progress, and yet we want to have our own rights. We want to, we want to be respected. We want, we want to make sure that the decision that's being made here today is a correct decision because it's going to lie, not with you to me, it's going to lie with our grandchildren and children's children. We are at a crossroads, I believe, and we have a chance to look at this seriously. And what it means seriously is that this is, this is not some, it, it, it's like planting a tree. You don't, you don't plant that tree for yourself, you plant that tree for the next guy to enjoy it. And that's what life should be about. So today, I'm sorry for, for both sides. I, I feel, I feel bad because I know we need heat, I, I'll heat the oil, we need to progress. But we also need to find ways that, that benefit both sides, not just one side. I, I look at, I look at the Bad River situation, and with the loop around that they're talking, to me, that's like putting a rope around someone. Because that's, that's just the potential of something going bad in the future. And we have to look at not what's good for now, but what's good for the future. Let's make, let's make this commitment so that we can all understand. I'm sorry, but I'm an emotional person, and this hurts. It hurts to see this. These people kind of write to, to ask for security. And they kind of write to know that they don't need to be worried about pipelines blowing up, destroying their water. Uh, so let's, let's see if we can make this a worthwhile. We're, we're all smart, intelligent people. And let's give ourselves credit, not let, let the big money people tell us what we got to do just for profit. But still, we got to do for what makes our hearts full. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Kevin Fineau, Staff Attorney for Clean Wisconsin. We're a statewide environmental organization since around nineteen seventy. Uh, I've been privileged to work there for close to a year, working on water shoots around the state. And one of the things I want to focus on, you know, so many people have spoken about so many issues already today so well, I'm hoping not to repeat too much, but one of the things I've gotten a chance to learn about in my work is the critical role of wetlands in all areas of the systems. And I've heard a lot of folks talk about concern about impacts of wetlands. I've heard other folks talk about plans to reduce their impacts from the proposed project. And one of the things I want to emphasize and build on a little bit on is the value of these ecosystem features and then the trouble with having a plan to try to not hurt them so badly. So the reason these things are so critical is because they're sort of force multipliers for nature. I mean, any place where water and land meets magical and wetlands are no different. Each of the places it really punch above their weight in terms of, you know, have that critical plants and animals. But they hold a ton of water to reduce the, how frequently and how bad floods are. They clean our water, they do all these amazing things for us, and they're beautiful to look at, and we should cherish them. And even in terms of sort of these ecosystem functions, in terms of trying to think about this in monetary terms, I think if we're going to make the mistake of knowing the price of everything and the value of nothing, even if we did that, the price of these things is extraordinary. And that's the reason that the laws should protect it. You know, in Wisconsin, we've lost, you know, some half of our historical wetlands. We already have a degraded environment in that sense. So when you do something that's going to hurt wetlands, you need to have a plan to avoid, minimize, and mitigate, right? And we've heard a lot of folks saying that that's what Enbridge has, but these plans are words on paper. One of the things that I've got a chance to do in my line of work is uh, be in a courtroom where I have consultants on the stand talking about their plans. And these plans have to be real, they can't just be words on paper. And, you know, Clean Wisconsin, our members, I know a lot of people have concerns with these plans, just from what they look like on the surface. And so what I would ask is that, um, those who take them less face value. We don't approve this plan, we don't approve this because of my concern, I believe, is that the wetland plans are going to be serious and profound and not avoided and mitigated for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you everybody for my opportunity to speak here today. I'm a steam thirers local one. Local six oh one business agent, Eric Oren, T R I K, O G, R E N. As a member of the Wisconsin Pipe Trades and the United Association of Turners and Apprentices of Plumbing and Piping Industry, Steam Thirers Local Six Oh One represents more than twenty-eight hundred tradesmen and women working in various pipe trades in our state. These skilled tradesmen and men, uh, our local union install and maintain heating and cooling and piping systems used in carrying everything from water to natural gas, nuclear fossil fuels, who work in schools, dairies, and even beer going through breweries. Our members also include the highly trained welders that make our region's energy pipeline system function, including those who will construct the proposed Line Five relocation project. Let me start by saying that the Wisconsin Pipe Trades Association and the seven other local unions that rough, and roughly ten thousand men and women we represent, support the proposed Line Five relocation. And urge the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to issue the permits for construction to begin. Enbridge Line Five Pipeline is a vital provider of crude oil and natural gas liquids that numerous refineries in the Midwest and Eastern Canada need to provide gas, diesel, and propane to our region. Despite the claims, I want to be clear, Line Five does in fact provide crude oil and natural gas liquids to refineries within the United States. In fact, our union brothers and sisters and the United Steelworkers have made very clear that shutting down Line Five will result in the loss of union jobs and refineries here in the United States. Additionally, a major propane supplier, Plains Midstream, has already promised that without this relocation project, and should Line Five shut down, they will close propane facilities in Superior, Wisconsin, as well as Rapid River, Michigan.
One minute.
Plains Mainstream also warned that shutting down Line Five could plunge Wisconsin into a propane state of emergency, spiking propane prices and sending supplies to dangerously low levels. In addition to the energy it provides, the Line Five relocation will create Wisconsin union jobs and bring in millions of economic development and increased tax revenues. In fact, the mainline contractor for the relocation project, Michael's Pipeline from right here in Wisconsin, has already signed project labor agreements with the pipe trades, labors, teamsters, and operating engineers. This will result in around seven hundred highly-paid, highly-skilled men and women being employed on this project. As a union that has a long history of working with both Michael's and Enbridge, I'm also confident the Line Five Relocation Project will be completed in the safest, most environmentally, and friendly manner possible. In summary, I believe that Line Five relocation is a win for Wisconsin's economy, the property area, Wisconsin workers, and the energy supply for our entire region.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Would you, if you were a Quinian Division councilor, if you were a Quinian Division manager, my name is Aurora Conley, A U R O R A, C O N L E Y. Not to be related to the Judge Conley. Um, I don't even know where to start. My name is Aurora Conley, and I'm one of the initial Bay of American Protection Alliance, working here in Bad River. I also stand with the Indigenous Women's, um, Treaty Alliance. And I'm a right-of-way specialist for Bad River, sorry. Um, I'm not speaking in the past evening, a right-of-way specialist today because now I've got three minutes, not three days. Um, I'm a member of Bad River, I grew up here at Bad River. I'm an activist mother, um, sister, daughter, many things, maybe, and we're in lots of hats. I'm urging, because the Army Corps is, most of you are from this region, St. Paul, but you've heard testimonies made from numerous people about how beautiful it is and how important it is to these people. I really encourage you to take that into fact. I also encourage you to acknowledge your own responsibility and obligation to evaluate, investigate, and collaborate with your colleagues in the different communities that you have already allowed Enbridge to permit in. For instance, Kalamazoo, that was referenced previously. Um, I've heard lots of testimony here today. One was that ninety-nine percent of, ninety-nine percent of Enbridge has a safety record. Let's not be one percent here. Let's not be the one point one percent that they're claiming is not set to save. We have heard of over one percent today of their track record, other than other folks' testimonies. Um, we fully would like to see, you know, I've heard testimony that, well, they've been looking at this for three years. You guys have been reviewing this for three years. I think more than Great Lakes of not just America, but of the earth are at risk. I would encourage you to investigate it or, you know, look at it for three more years, maybe even ten. We're not just talking about Little Lake One Bay, we're down south. We're not just talking about a Little Lake Lena. We're talking about Lake Superior, here's the largest freshwater on earth, and I know I understand that, but it has more importance just to you as well than it does just to me. Um, as far as trespassing and their track record, um, we can talk all day about what Enbridge has done or not done, but really let's look at the facts here in our case specifically, and what, um, the potential could be for Lake Superior and the people in the region here. Um, just their track record of trespassing, we really want to see the D I S. We don't want to grow on aquifers, be cursed, and, um, just sacrificed for something that I think isn't going to be viable. This is like, um, a side-on-side fight, and it's hard to be excited. It's really hard to be in a room where people are watching and listening to you, and they're everywhere. But, um, I just want to encourage you for your responsibility and obligation to evaluate this. And also collaborate with the region from Kalamazoo and take those communities' comments into consideration as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Kristen Peters. K R I S T I N, Peters, P E T R S. I stand here as Franciscan sister, or perpetual abration, from across Wisconsin. And I stand here as a concerned citizen. While it's already been stated that Enbridge has been mindful of safety, and it's already been stated that Line Five has spilled over one point one million gallons at least thirty-three times along its length since nineteen sixty-eight through the heart of the Great Lakes. It continues to be a fact that twenty-three million gallons of oil continue to flow through the Great Lakes and could at risk the watershed and ecosystems. Environmental instability further increases the risk of an environmental crisis if there is a pipeline break. Investment in fossil fuels puts our community and our health at risk. Studies have proven from North Dakota to the Yukon that a pipeline installation and their camps brings additional crime as well as environmental damage. In two thousand eleven, two hundred and seven crimes rates were recorded. In two thousand twelve, two hundred forty-three. There was a seven point two increase in violent crime. As a mental health counselor, I know the impact of community dissolution,
one minute.
non-cooperation and disconnection from the environment. I'm standing here today with the earth, with the water, with the women, children, and human beings who depend on the water and the source and sustainer of all life. I ask you not to put at risk our welfare, to create jobs to remove the pipeline, and do not approve this permit.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Uh, thank you for having the opportunity to speak before you in person. My name is Max Carl. First name is Max, N A X, last name is Carl, K A R L. I'm a resident of Big Hill Town. I, I, I've been getting these fires in the mail from Enbridge, and periodically, Enbridge has a full-page ad- has a full page ad in one of the papers, and they're telling about all the good things that Enbridge does, their good neighbor. But I want to step back for a minute. First of all, I should tell you that my position is that the line should be decommissioned and then should be removed, and the land should be reclaimed, and so that's my position on that. But I want to talk about this example that at the Calum's Zoo, still in two thousand ten, it was in July. That pipe had a rip in it six feet long, and it spilled for seventeen hours before it was, before the pipe was turned off, before the oil ceased to flow. And Enbridge came, and when the investigation was done later, it was some months later, it became known that the, those cracks had been known for five years, and nothing, Enbridge had done nothing about it. So, they're such a huge corporation, they have so many pipes, and they're pumping so much oil. And it's good to remember that they're not pumping that oil to keep your town alive or to keep you from freezing in the dark. They're pumping that oil for profit, and it always comes down for profit with them. So, one minute.
One minute.
Okay, briefly then, I want to talk about the atmosphere. That's the speaker's talking about water, but just let me borrow your imagination for just a minute, and imagine how much energy you use on your day, and imagine how much energy you use in your house this year, and imagine all the gas stations, and all the coal trains, and all that energy per year for the whole world. That's the same amount of energy that comes from the sun in five minutes. So if you're a person like me with solar panels, right away you're, hurrah, I'll never be out of energy. But when you think about it a little longer, you realize that the greatest job that the atmosphere does is shunting all that extra energy into space so we don't burn up. But we're up to four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and twenty parts per million now, and there would be a tipping point that will be drastic. So just imagine that, and thank you for letting me speak, and have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jackie Christensen, J A C I C H R I S T E N S O N. The Corps' draft environmental assessment is insufficient to protect the Bad River watershed. I'm here to share my experience from the two years that I volunteered as a field monitor on Enbridge's Line Three Ninety-Three. On Line Three Ninety-Three, there are numerous examples of failure by Enbridge and permitting agencies to understand ecosystems and the resulting impacts of construction. And when things went awry, there was failure to report. In analyzing impacts on Line Five, do not minimize impacts as short term. Oil pipeline construction impacts are often significant, long-term hydrologic changes as we experienced with Line Three Ninety-Three. Some examples, deep excavation, like at Clearbrook Aquifer Breach. Enbridge excavated through the confining unit, causing aquifer water to flow upward. A change in temperature and chemistry disrupts wetlands. Depress, depressuring the aquifer can dry up the springs and wetlands. Another example, sheet piling, like at Fond du Lac, LaSalle Valley, and Moose Lake Aquifer Breaches. Enbridge installed sheet piling through the confining unit, causing confined aquifer water to flow upward, again a change in temperature and chemistry. Number three, channelized upwelling at fracouts, like at Mississippi River. Majority of H D D sites have drilling fluid eruption spills permanently and placed in the floodplain, and constituents leak into groundwater. Enbridge, Enbridge's Line Three Ninety-Three fracout rate was sixty-seven percent failure. Army Corps with your regulatory authority of White River H D D crossing, you can prevent this harm. In creating a DEA or a, and/or a DEIS, impact assessment must consider aquifer breaches and fracouts as long term. Moose Lake Menomen Waters in Aiken County, Minnesota, is an example of how Enbridge failed to monitor and/or report hydrology impacts. In June twenty twenty-two, field monitors, including myself, discovered and documented and reported the Moose Lake Aquifer Breach. We were ignored. The aquifer continued breaching as we documented in July and November of two thousand twenty-two, January of two thousand twenty-three, and still in July of two thousand twenty-three. After thirteen months of pleas from volunteers, the state of Minnesota and Enbridge admitted to the Moose Lake Aquifer Breach, the fourth on the Line Three Ninety-Three project. So in conclusion, Enbridge is a bad actor. They failed to adhere to the permits, their actions make it clear that they do not understand geology and water ridge environments, and Enbridge failed to report their failures. I stand with Bad River's inherent treaty rights, no more permits, no more harm. I thank you, and I will leave you with our documentation of the ten long-term hydrologic impacts that we have seen in the middle of Line Three Ninety-Three. Who could I leave this with?
If you go to the information desk outside, someone will be able to.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristy Gench, K R I S T Y, and my last name is spelled J E N S C H. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Ashland, Bigfield County, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and also for running a really well organized event. This is the map of the hydrology of the area that we're talking about. You will notice all the rivers running from the base of where, down by Copper Falls, which is where the reroute is planned for. The red line is the Bad River watershed area. I'm going to leave that here for you to consider. The proposed forty mile expansion of this line is a complex project with the potential to harm surface and groundwater, threaten public health, and hurt our tourism industry for generations. The reroute poses a threat to even more water resources as all of the endangered rivers, streams, and wetlands lie within the Bad River watershed and flow through the cocogen Bad River Wetland Complex at the top of that map. A wetland of international recognition and significance and in to Lake Superior. The applicable environmental laws and regulations mandate that a full and complete environmental evaluation be conducted, an E I S, and the adequate time be provided to the public to assess and respond. This hearing fails to meet those requirements. In twenty nineteen, our league signed a resolution in opposition to the continued operation of Line Five and its removal from the Bad River watershed. Our organization closely followed the company's application process and submitted lengthy and well researched comments to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
One minute.
We feel that the short timeline and turnaround for this public hearing, based on the need to reevaluate a thousand page document with its appendices, is frankly an insult to the number of hours and years and work that you have put into it, as well as to us in our ability to provide a fair evaluation of what we have written. Again, I'd like to leave you with, just thank you for this opportunity. Please do a complete E I S, and we will be submitting written comments of the E A, and we hope to look forward to a general public hearing of it, E I S sometime in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We will take a five minute break, and we'll resume at two oh five. Thank you.
The pipe disrepair is concluded and the hearing is now considered.
Okay, before we start speakers, just reminder to the speakers to speak directly into the mic to make it get a little closer, just to make sure that people can hear on broadcast. Okay, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Shawn Gallagher, Shawn S C A M, Gallagher G K L L A H E H R. I've been a life long resident of North Wisconsin and worked at Enbridge for just over 12 years. During that 12 years, I've been a member of the pipeline maintenance team in Superior, Wisconsin. Our crew is responsible for maintaining and replacing any of our infrastructure that we repair. We are trained in emergency response and we are the first on site of any, any emergency that potentially occurs. We are a crew of tight knit individuals that care a great deal about each other, our work, and the environment that we work and live in. We work side by side with other pipeline maintenance crews from places such as Beaufort, Missouri, Sodna, Vesper, Wisconsin, Ironwood, Michigan, and many others. And it is clear working with these people that employees across the room take great pride in our work and our communities. Our pipeline maintenance crews are strategically located throughout our right of way to ensure quick response to any and every emergency. With that said, it is no surprise that Enbridge goes beyond addressing potential impacts and exceeds all current agency and reclamation standards. Their commitment and approach truly represents the strict environmental values which Enbridge operates. There are many reasons and statistics to show the importance of replacing line five and ensuring essential fuels to heat homes, schools, and businesses are delivered throughout our region. Enbridge is a company that operates on great integrity and they care about the people and the communities that we touch. For these reasons, I am in support of line five. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Jason Gallagher, Bonne Lake Reservation and Bonne Lake Travel Monitor. We're hired through the Bonne Lake Reservation as a accountability to Enbridge to hold them accountable. And there's been already multiple incidences where Enbridge has not been held in trust. They seem to make up their rules and not necessarily abide when we're not babysitting them. We have noticed procedure violations as well as safety violations. And they don't always hold true to the word. This water that we're trying to protect place of the year is very vital to this, not only tourism industry, but this, you know, the oil's only worth billions. The water's worth priceless, you know, quadrillions if you had to put a number on it. I am all for removing line five, which will create jobs, repairing the water in Michigan, which will create jobs, water pipelines, which will create jobs. But we don't need no more oil, especially with the mild winter that we've had recently. Copper Falls has had a very unique species of plant there called the black ash tree, which is endangered in the United States. And Bonne Lake Reservation, we've had lots of invasive species issues from people all around the country coming to our area, spreading invasive species. We need to stop that now before we, before the black ash trees extinct. And also protect our water. The boring under copper falls might also release possible minerals that are not yet known yet. We need further P I S draft, you know, it could release sulfur, sulfide, which is poisonous to the water supply. And this is coming from my professional opinion. I've worked for Enbridge and I've also have protected the water as well. So thank you very much. J A S O N G O W A R D.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sherry Ture, S H E R Y, C L E T R U. I'm a Cosia citizen, but today I am going to be as a member, stakeholder from the pipeline, but you were not eighteen with fourteen territory. So it's a history territory in eighteen fifty-four. We got two and then found a lot of seven two or three. In the count of eighteen fifty-four, I also have two rights since the eighteen thirty-seven and eighteen forty-two going over up into Michigan. The reason why I'm a stakeholder, the zombie of the Apostle Islands has been returned to the right form. Found the lack of natural water, and even the United States is one of the returners like this was, the someone they took on was took on a pay. Prestige country has a natural spring water and only found a lot of that in this area. Others that is responsible has completely disappeared. Others are risk coming, I've always had treatment, but it's like it. While they're being abandoned, and now bad river has to argue with us without. So now, the United States are in court obligation. And the biggest question is are we going to act on that? On the constitution, the United States Supreme, Constitution, themselves, to the other Supreme Court. So when we say no, I do not see the after Congress and President calling anybody in. Have the end, we have people who went through the opposite reaches. Um, I find it careless. If the under court engineers allows these companies without having Enbridge come up with a solution to the horizontal journey because of the thirteen opposite reaches. Final Act of Life is still making six gallons every six minutes because of Enbridge and wet coal sales. I oppose.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Casey Aronson, C A S E Y A R O N S O N. I was born here in Ashland. Today, my family and I live in the country, about ten miles outside of Spooner on a small lake. We love the great outdoors and our free time, we enjoy being outside with nature, whether it be boating, kayaking, canoeing, hunting, fishing, hiking, gardening, or just sitting in the backyard listening to the birds. I believe that God spent a little extra time when he made northern Wisconsin. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. I would consider myself a steward of the land and I hope that we all would. While we're enjoying the outdoors and we try to leave it the way we found it. Seventeen years ago, I started my career as a heavy equipment operator. I joined the operating engineers local on thirty-nine apprenticeship program and went to work on an Enbridge pipeline. For two years, I worked in wetlands, river crossings, and other environmentally sensitive areas. I personally experienced the care and thoughtful planning that is put into crossing a wetland, creek, or river. Making sure that animals, fish, trees, water, and the earth are safe and protected while being disturbed. When finished, we left the land how we found it. Enbridge, along with the union contractors and union employees, work together to go above and beyond the requirements to protect the environment and the wildlife. We support clean energy as well, such as solar and wind. However, as we transition to a more clean energy, there is still need for reliable energy. We can't rely on solar or wind to heat our homes, schools, and hospitals, along with fueling our vehicles, buses, and farm equipment. And if we all use wood to heat our homes, schools, hospitals, and businesses, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't have too many trees left. I'm asking you to issue the permits required to move this project forward. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Good morning, over that community, I should say, my name is Brian Ape, B R I A N D A K E. I'm the president of Wisconsin Independent Businesses. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at this public hearing about the Enbridge Line Five Relocation Project. W I B is one of the state's largest small business advocacy organizations. We proudly represent more than two thousand small business owners throughout Wisconsin. For decades, Enbridge Line Five is safely transported, affordable, reliable fuel and energy that Wisconsin's small businesses need to operate. This pipeline provides gasoline to fuel their delivery trucks and propane for heating and cooling their facilities. The future of this vital link in the energy infrastructure network for Wisconsin and the upper Midwest is uncertain, and that is deeply concerning to us. Wisconsin is not a fuel producing state. Without line five, the nearly twenty-three million gallons of crude oil and natural gas liquids transported daily through this pipeline would have to be transported by more expensive means, truck or rail. Wisconsin's small business cannot afford these costly alternatives. If line five is shut down, a major regional propane supplier, Plains Midstream, has warned it would shutter its three propane facilities, which in turn would lead to propane shortages and price hikes worse than the propane shortage of the twenty thirteen, twenty four, fourteen winter that led to Wisconsin declaring a state of emergency. Ashland and Iron Townes are home to many small businesses that rely on the wonderful natural resources to draw tourists and residents for fishing, hunting, and recreation. We are pleased the Mount Enbridge selected for the pipeline avoids some of the more sensitive areas and offers protection to the natural resources so valuable to many of these businesses. We appreciate the fact that the project was designed to mitigate and or minimize any impacts on the wetlands or watershed areas with which the construction project comes impacting. The reduction of the construction workspace also minimizes any adverse effects on the tourism industry in the area. With the necessary permits from the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Patricians, this relocation project will provide good paying union construction jobs to an estimated seven hundred skilled trades workers and result in an overall economic impact to the state of Wisconsin of approximately one hundred and thirty-five million dollars. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the Army Corps of Engineers to approve the improvements associated with line five relocation project and allow Enbridge to move forward with the construction and completion of this pipeline. Thank you for your time.
Just as a reminder, please silence your cell phones at a respective hearing. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Adam Casino, A D A M, K A S E N O. I'm a long life resident of northern Wisconsin. I'm also a member of the operating engineers and work as a business agent. I cover seven colonies in northeast Wisconsin with local one thirty-nine, or one thirty-nine, excuse me. While operating engineers local one thirty-nine is headquartered in Pewaki, the union maintains district offices in Madison, Appleton, and Altoona, as well as a state certified training site in Coloma, where it puts an emphasis on training its members to be the most productive and safest operating engineer that can be and employees for the contractors they work for. Operating engineers local one thirty-nine has more than eleven thousand five hundred active men and women, as well as retired members. With nearly fifteen hundred members living in northern Wisconsin, you know, Bayfield Colony, Ashland Colony, Iron Colony, you know, among these people. Operating engineers local one thirty-nine, and I believe as well as most Wisconsinites, consider Enbridge to be a good community member. They employ hundreds of our neighbors and friends, pay millions in taxes, and safely and efficiently transport the North American sourced and produced products that are vitally important to the safety of our families and to the health of our economy. The line five relocation product, project does not increase the use or capacity of crude oil or refined products. It simply replaces a portion of the existing line at the request of the sovereign tribal nation with new, even safer pipe. The line five relocation project was thoroughly surveyed and selected to avoid sensitive resources and areas. The project design mitigates and minimizes impacts on wetlands, water bodies, threatened endangered species, habitat, archaeological and cultural resources, and other areas that may impact the health and vitality of the forests within the area. As a longtime resident of northern Wisconsin, I know firsthand that, living in northern Wisconsin, I worked outside the area along with most of the other fifteen hundred members that I mentioned earlier. This project will give these people an opportunity that are probably gone all week, sometimes all month, or maybe gone all summer, all over the United States working. This whole project will give them an opportunity to work closer to them and spend the extra time with their family and friends.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Terry Larson, L A R S O N. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this important issue. I'm here because I believe it is important for you to use your power and authority to stop the use of line five. This is an important issue to me because of several things. I served in the US military for a total of twenty-seven years. I served tours of duty in Vietnam as well as Central Asia. My oath of enlistment required me to support and depend my country. I did that. It's in that same spirit that I am here today. For me, there are three critical reasons to stop the use of line five. First of all, because the sovereign nation of the Bad River people have asked that it be stopped. Decades of infringement of that pipeline on their land was wrong. Their requests were ignored, that wrong needs to be righted, not simply by shifting line five, but stopping the use of line five. Secondly, the environmental danger of having an oil pipeline so close to the beautiful freshwater treasure of Lake Superior is unacceptable. A break, a leak, even a seep in the aged pipeline would cause environmental damage and possibly catastrophic harm to the lake and the surrounding area. Lastly, climate change is real. We experienced a consequence of that two weeks ago when an eighty mile an hour wind blew through the Madison area. Weather events which used to occur only once every fifty or a hundred years are now occurring with insidious regularity. Burning fossil fuel is a primary cause of climate change, pulling tar laden oil out of the ground for the sake of cheap oil at quick trip is ruining the future habitability of our, our world. We must focus on renewable energy. It creates good labor, union jobs. Again, thank you for allowing me to provide this testimony. Please use your power and authority to stop the use of line five. Stop it for the sake of the people of Bad River Reservation, stop it for the sake of the safety of Lake Superior, stop it for the sake of the well being of our natural world, and for all the people on our mother earth. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Everlasting Wind and I'm from Wager. My official name is Dawngodwin, D A W N G O O D W I N. I'm here today to warn you all. I'm from Minnesota. This is a repeat of history. Indigenous people, my people, we were ignored in Minnesota during the construction, the reroute and relocation of line three. This is a repeat. That river community is being ignored. Treaties and sovereignty are being ignored. And we're tired of it. We are tired of it. I'm going off script right now. We are tired of it. We are. These are our lands. You may think you own them, but these aren't native lands. This is Indian land. You are all here because we sign treaties to live in peace. We are in climate emergency and people are not acting as such. The days of entitlement are over. We need to protect what's left and it's your responsibility to do it. Every single one of you, and I'm sorry if I'm charged, but I want you to know that yes, I am angry. I am angry at what happened in Minnesota and as my friend testified. The monitoring of line three construction, there was four reported frappos. One fra, or not frappo, aquifer reach. One was reported several months later after Enbridge was allowed to take five billion gallons of water in a drought, extreme drought. No, correct it, exceptional drought. There's even a bigger term than extreme. We were in a drought. We were fighting line three and the trees were wilting. As I went down one last time to appeal to my Minnesota governor to stop line three. And pay attention to our treaties. Respect. The indigenous people went in for all.
Thank you, thank you.
If line five were unreasonable to be shut down, the feds would not have demanded so.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next speaker.
Good afternoon, I'm Amy. I wish to give you the great indigenous accounts much busy being in Geneva, Miss Coop and Estee. I said my name is Bruce, I work in the language and I am from Bad River and I carry the lumberjack clan. My given name is Jill Hartleb, J I L L A J R T L E B. Right away, because I didn't write anything down, I just want to say I am, I am standing in support of the reroute. Line five. And I, in case there are any comments, just want to give you a little history on how I did not always have that perspective and that's not where my heart was all, all the time. I myself was also on a environment committee that was formed by the Bad River Tribe when a mining company was coming. And I got to learn about the Pinocchis and how sacred they are. During that time, I did a lot of things that were out of my wheelhouse. And in case there are any comments, just want to give you a little history on how I did not always have that perspective, and that's not where my heart was all the time. I myself was also on an environment committee that was formed by the Bad River tribe when a mining company was coming, and I got to learn about the Pinocchis and how sacred they are. During that time, I did a lot of things that were out of my wheelhouse, testified, go to Madison. I was a youth worker, and it matched my life. And I believe that what I heard originally, when it first, when it came into my radar, was that a ceremony had been performed and said that the Pinocchis are going to be okay. They're there to protect and be there for the people, but they're not going to do it if they don't know you. So I fasted, I feasted, I put berries out, I walked with some sisters, Nishnabi and others. And it was a long journey, and I always wanted to keep peace and do the right thing. I never thought of myself as a protector, but I took it upon myself to use the teachings of caring and caring for the water. And so I got disengaged from my tribe through pandemic and everything else, and then realized that there was a lawsuit, and it scared me that it, with the countersuit, it forced the company to do reroute. But they did come to our community in honor of support and community tribal engagement, and has given some of the tribal members that took the opportunity to do career path, do changes. And she's not in this room, but my daughter got opioid treatments and took a course that was a scholarship by Enbridge, and now she is doing environmental work on Line 3. So over forty-five days ago, she was opioid addict, and now it's given opportunity for a new career path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Good afternoon. I was, yeah, Nokomis is my name. I have a few things. Okay, so first, we need to have more public comments, so we need to write that down. Consultation is not consent, of course, we already know that, right? The other thing is, I really wanted to say, you seriously don't know what had happened in North Dakota? No, we don't have to answer that. All right, well, let me share with you what had happened in North Dakota.
Mark, I'm sure it's important. Hi, I need to report an assault against Standing Rock. There are innocent unarmed people being attacked with water and malicious style police firing at point blank range with high powered weapons on unarmed people. Who protects the people?
Yeah, if there's police there, then...
The police are the ones attacking innocent unarmed people. The one we do to stop the police is literally hitting people at point blank range in the face. People could lose eyes, people are in hypothermia, people could die. We have elders here, we have children here, we have all ages here. Nobody is armed except for the police. Who protects the people from the police?
Well, I guess if you want to put it up to the chief of command, the next person to talk to would be the governor's office.
Do you know a tree will last a family of four, four days of oxygen? Did you know that? Did anybody know that? So what is Enbridge doing, what is the Army Corps doing to reduce that? There is so much of the wrong this process, you don't even know where to begin. We had gone to Washington DC to deliver nine thousand petitions. There we got denied. There they told us to speak with the project manager. Are you the project manager? Anyways, so I'm supposed to be talking to you that no means no.
Thank you, ma'am.
When you talk to children.
Your turn is up, thank you.
Also, I have, oh wait, never mind, I'll save that for later, thank you.
Thank you, yep, you can submit your...
Oh, I will later, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. You spelled your name correctly.
N-O-O-K-O-M-I-S.
All right, next speaker.
My name is Jean Pagliaro. I traveled here today with my friends from the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration in La Crosse, Wisconsin, right on the Mississippi River. Living in that beautiful part of the state has shown me how crucial it is to protect watersheds as valuable natural resources. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and for working on this very important issue. I'm speaking in opposition to Enbridge's proposed permit for the Line 5 oil pipeline, and I want to start off by saying that I recognize the complexity of all of this. I know that livelihoods, no matter what, are going to be affected. I hear that, I understand that. My values compel me to share today. The only option for long-term sustainable livelihood is no pipeline. There are multiple generations that have already been impacted by this pipeline, and it will continue to impact future generations. Line 5 is a risk to ecosystems that support livelihoods such as fishing, hunting, gathering. The potential for a catastrophic failure of Line 5 would destroy the health and well-being of rural communities. According to the Wisconsin Health Equity data from the University of Wisconsin Population Health Institute, communities in rural Wisconsin already experience poor health outcomes, significant disparities in healthcare access, especially for mental health providers. To allow this pipeline to remain open is to risk devastation to communities, families, and individuals that already are vulnerable. I'm a mom of two. I know how difficult it is to provide for a family. And I also know that when stability, health, and well-being is threatened, that has a huge effect on the people that I love. So I'm asking you to oppose the permit for Line 5 because of the significant threat to our ecosystem as well as the overall health and wellness that spans from generation to generation. Thank you again for taking the time to listen, and I hope you'll consider them as you make your decisions.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ellen Sims. And I'm here today to recognize that there is not an easy situation. Jobs may be lost, money always involved, but there's something that I'm speaking for today that is irreplaceable, and that's clean water. This is not our land. This is not our land. We as humans think we're above everything, at least by the ways that we act. We're a part of this earth. The First Nations people knew this. They lived for centuries without propane. They lived with the earth, honoring it as sacred, as a part of them. And we too could do this and learn. There's no easy way, but I just want you to consider our children, this earth. Do you have children? I know you, we all were children. I'll never forget playing in the creeks and the woods as a kid, my sacred safe space from humans, from fighting, whatever. And I used to play in the creek with the crawdads and salamanders, and there was one day when I went down there, and they were dead. My heart was broken. Have you ever seen a child's heart breaking? When they play in nature and they love it, they don't know anything different. The bird dies. Have you seen that child's heart broken? And that was just a moment in my life I'll never forget, from some construction of a new neighborhood up the river. They weren't doing anything wrong. But imagine, imagine tons of gallons of oil. We are not infallible. We are fallible. We make mistakes. Technology makes mistakes. Were you on your computer yesterday and it glitched? We can't say that it's not going to happen. And then what happens when Lake Superior has oil in it? What happens when the White River has oil in it? And even then, just the construction and the rerouting, I reject Line 5. I know I don't have much time, and I won't take up more space. But let's just consider there are alternatives. There are alternatives to jobs, there are alternatives to propane. There is not an alternative to clean water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Bork. B is in Boy, O-R-K-E. Coming over from Michigan and visiting some of my relatives here, and I'd like to point out something that somebody else just previously mentioned, that we could all have a plaque of who you are. I see the Colonel here, but we would like to know who we're actually speaking to that would help us in this conversation process. As part of the background, my background is that as a chef, and you see, we have this problem, and I make food, and the line of water, people poison the water, you're actually putting me in a position that I'm actually poisoning people. We think that we've gone so far in the last four hundred years, and it appears that we've gone from kill the Indians, save the man, to save the corporation, kill the human. We haven't really come that far. I'm coming here from Michigan. I've lived through Kalamazoo Oil still, and I've lived through the Flint Water Crisis. Your assessment that you put out talks about separating the different things and not having things interconnected. And I'll tell you, if one part shuts down, it's connected to the other part. How can you separate something that is obviously connected? If we shut it down at the Straits of Mackinac, Bad River, we have both areas. This pipeline is seventy-one years old. They're talking about a reroute. It is not a reroute. They're building a new pipeline. Let's be real about this. This isn't just a small reroute. It's twenty-one years past is like expectancy. They're building a whole new pipeline, and they're doing it one piece at a time, forcing the rest of the position. Do you have the ability to say no? If you don't have the ability to say no, then you need to go bring it up to your bosses, because then you don't actually have a choice in what are we paying for you for if you cannot protect us. Third parties, third parties, are you up there on these easements monitoring these guys? No, you've heard of these third parties. The third parties work for the company. I've worked with these third parties. I've had them play need for sanitation, for contamination that the companies have caused. The data that you're getting in that report, it's what we call PR material, public relations material. You're asking them for files, they put together a focused informational packet that is there for public relations. It's not real data. You want real data, ask them for the real data. You go back to the Kalamazoo Oil still? I know two people that are left alive. Everybody else is dead. Dead through sicknesses, through disease, slowly. And the animals, the people, this is where we're at now. So we ask you to deny the possibility to carry this, even an ounce step forward. Why are we paying for your guys' time here? If you're not going to protect us, Line 5 needs to be shut down. Last week, the year before, the year before, we're in a ticking time bomb, and every single day we are at risk. Shut it down. Thank you.
So before we begin the next speaker, so we are almost at the end of session one. Our last speaker will end at 3:00 PM or just after to allow the speaker their full three minutes. Registration for the session two lottery begins at 3:00 PM and closes at 3:45. Persons not heard during this session are welcome to register for session two. Okay, next speaker.
My name is Catherine Watson. I want to start with some numbers you've already heard today, and presumably I've heard of you about before this. One point one million gallons over thirty-three documented spills. That's not guaranteed to be accurate, but one point one million gallons over the time period that this pipeline has existed illegally on this land. Those are facts. Those are, someone earlier said that he believed that they would do it in a safe way. That's very nice for him, but I don't believe him over the fact, which is that it is not a matter of will this leak, can we keep it safe, it's a matter of they do leak, they constantly leak, and we know that. We know that this one will leak. It is just a matter of time until when it does again, right? It could today, it could tomorrow. So when you keep those facts in mind, whenever people from Enbridge say these things, don't just take those things at face value. What is your job to not take those things at face value? What is your job to look at research and data compiled by professionals? I want to discuss one of the other harms that construction of new pipelines, and in this case, the rerouting of this pipeline can cause for indigenous communities. Camps that are set up to construct pipelines are called in that context, man camps. Man camps are groups who don't live in that area, in that community, and they don't have ties to that community, right? They're temporary positions. They don't have ties to that land or that place. Those man camps are proven again to be the cause of an increase in drug and alcohol abuse, violence, racism, and sexual violence, harassment, and trafficking in those areas. Forty percent of sex trafficking victims are indigenous women. These increases happen within those indigenous communities. Just because it is routed around that pipeline does not mean that it is not still within that area of those indigenous communities who are going to receive harm from this. Murder is the third leading cause of death for indigenous women, which is ranked ten times higher than other ethnicities. These cause demonstrative harm to the rights that trees protect, both the rights of individual people to be safe in their own land and their rights to use their natural resources for their cultural purposes. And those include their waterways, not just that delineation, that square delineation of land that we see on a map. And any spill into any of these waterways is going to affect all of it. These have negative consequences for these communities, and we cannot be disregarding that in the face of, as someone said, PR from Enbridge, paid people from Enbridge. Enbridge gathering groups of people to come here and tell bold-faced lies in front of this committee, and it is your job to win out the truth from that at our reporting.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for having me speak today. My name is Angel LaIve. L-A-I-V-E-L-A-W. I currently serve as the president and CEO of Synergy with Regional Economic Development Organization serving central Wisconsin. We're here today to fully support the relocation of Line 5 Energy Pipeline, recognizing its crucial importance to Synergy region and our communities in the Midwest. This project offers a balanced solution that aligns with the environmental concerns while ensuring the continued operation of a vital piece of energy infrastructure. Energy stability is crucial for the Synergy region, which encompasses Adams, Lincoln, Maricon, Portage, and Wood County here in Wisconsin. Synergy's mission is to advance the prosperity and virancy in central Wisconsin by fostering collaboration amongst businesses, government, and educational institutes. The relocation of Line 5 aligns with our mission, which is to support the sustainable quality of life that's here in Wisconsin, and we want to promote by ensuring reliable access to essential energy resources. The potential shutdown of Line 5 would be far-reaching consequences for our region. As you've heard, a major supplier has warned about several closures that would happen. This could create a supply shortage not seen since the state of emergency over a decade ago. As a resident of a Wisconsin rural community, I use propane. The prices are not cheap currently, along with many others in our communities. We rely solely on this to heat our homes or schools and our businesses. The absence of Line 5 would directly threaten our ability to maintain a safe and comfortable living environment during Wisconsin severe winters, not just for ourselves, but all towns in Wisconsin. not just for ourselves, but all towns in Wisconsin. Embridge has shown a strong commitment to environmental stewardship and community engagement in the planning of this relocation. The proposed route avoids sensitive areas and the agreements have been secured with all landowners along the path. I personally have been on the proposed reroute location and have spoke with local property owners who are in favor of it. The economic benefit from the relocation has been discussed here, and I won't cover that because it's already been covered. But in conclusion, the Line 5 relocation project is essential for maintaining energy stability in the Senergy region and the Midwest and ensures a continued supply of energy that's crucial to our resources, our homes, our people, and our businesses. But it still respects the rights and concerns of the Bad River Band and supports the economic vitality of Wisconsin. I urge approval and swift implementation of this crucial project, and I thank you all for your time today.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ryan Sisid, R-Y-A-N-S-I-S-T-A-D. I'm the Executive Director, veteran of backyard. And I'm here today to talk and support or probably support the Line 5 relocation project simply due to because we need the products that Line 5 delivers every day, whether it's the diesel for our cars, the gasoline for our cars, or the propane that we need to heat our homes. Uh, this past year, we've experienced record inflation numbers. Without Line 5, those inflation numbers are only going to increase and it's going to disproportionately impact low and middle-income citizens. And not only this, the project is also adhering to the wishes of the Bad River Tribe of not being on tribal lands. And it's going to bring in over seven hundred million, or excuse me, seven hundred, it's going to deliver seven hundred good-paying jobs, most of them good-paying union jobs. And most of those jobs will be from folks from Wisconsin. It will also bring in over four hundred million dollars of economic impact and increasing property tax revenues by over eight million dollars a year. So um, I'm just, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and support the project, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Hasbrock, um, that's spelled P-H-Y-L-L-I-S-H-A-S-B-R-O-M-U-C-K. Thank you for holding this hearing on Line 5. I urge you to do a full environmental impact statement given the immense threat that the proposed reroute poses to us all. This new portion of Line 5 would be an even greater threat than the existing Line 5. How so? After all, the current Line 5 has leaked or ruptured twenty-nine times, releasing one point one million gallons of toxic Tarzan's oil. Surely a new section would not leak like that? Ha, studies have shown that new pipelines are just as likely to rupture as old pipelines. But more importantly, our atmosphere is now in much worse shape than it was in nineteen fifty-three when Line 5 was made. There is no more margin of error to avoid climate catastrophe. So even if Embridge could guarantee that there would be no leaks or ruptures, this permit would need to be rejected because Line 5 brings oil to markets to be sold and then burned, leading, leading to the situation that Antonio Buteras had of the United Nations called humanity opening the gates to hell. I'm speaking now directly to you employees of the Army Corps whose job is to thoroughly investigate the damage which a permit would permit. A thorough investigation needs an environmental impact statement, which you so far have refused to do. Now, I understand how hard it would be to go against the wishes of Big Oil. Maybe if you deny the permit, you will be denied a job. But surely the opportunity to shut those gates of hell which Big Oil is holding wildly open means that a promotion, it means more than a promotion, a raise, or a job. Yes, it's true that you can only influence a small fraction of the oil currently getting to market. But your opportunity to set example for agencies around the world must not be wasted. If you turn down this permit, you will be heroes to the people of the Great Lakes, the United States, and the world. What's at stake? The Zurge Insurance Group estimates that one point two billion people could be displaced globally by twenty fifty due to climate change and the national disasters that are caused by it. That's only twenty-six years away, and the migration has already begun within the United States and throughout the world. Imagine yourself or your child or grandchild losing their home to a wildfire or a flood, becoming a climate refugee. What would you feel as you considered that you had approved a project that directly caused a warning that led to these catastrophes? Keep that scene in mind as you consider this opportunity that may not come again. The opportunity to start bringing down the level of atmospheric CO2 that threatens us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Scott Pitta, S-C-O-T-T-P-I-T-T-A. Thank you for a well-run hearing. I especially like the moderate system selection process. I'm against the reroute of Line 5. The plan indicates that it will cross over two hundred streams in its project, and it is mathematically impossible to cross two hundred waterways without error. In Minnesota, we learned that the same pipeliners had trouble building, constructing a pipeline across a level of our flat ground. They have numerous trackouts that still haven't been fully repaired. If they cannot lay pipe across flat earth, there is no way they can build a pipeline through the hills. The risks to contamination are my primary concern. If there is a, if there is a spill where it crosses the Bad River adjacent to Copper Falls Park, it will put two state parks and one national park at risk of contamination. This is suicide for the tourism of the area. Tourists aren't going to swim in water that's contaminated. They're not going to fish in the parks if there are warnings that the fish are not safe to eat, if the fish are alive at all. A contaminated bay means the end of the salmon fishery business in Schwaberrham Bay. It previously impacts the lakefront real estate. No one's going to spend a million dollars on a cabin or superior if they can't walk along the beach in front of their mansion. With regard to the permit, the maps currently used by Embridge are outdated, and we need the newest maps, which include all the identifying features with regard to special water resources.
One minute.
No one has ever attempted a project on this scale in Wisconsin. The risks to the watershed are too high to permit. The cost of cleanup will be larger than the profits made for installation. And who will pay for the bill? Going finance, the state of Wisconsin? Who will pay the price of cleanup? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Doug Hoyer, D-H-E-U-B-Y. I'm a settler from New Atlas. And today we've heard a lot about jobs and propane and safety and training and childhood memories and dreams. And we've had some live service to the environment and native culture. I'd like to read something here that you should recognize. "The mission is to deliver vital engineering solutions in collaboration with our partners to secure our nation, energize our economy, and reduce disaster risk." Do you recognize that? That's your mission statement. So let's talk about securing our nation. Is security in a large energy infrastructure? Or is security in distributed energy infrastructure? I put solar on my house four years ago and I haven't picked a lighter bill since. I don't need a large electrical infrastructure to do that. A large electrical infrastructure and a large fossil fuel infrastructure like pipelines and refineries are a national security risk. Distributed energy is not. Distributed renewable energy is not. Energize our economy, where are the new jobs coming from? They're not coming from fossil fuels. They're coming from renewable energy, they're coming from service industry.
One minute.
Reducing in Grand Rapids that unfortunately occurred in the winter, so all the ice, all the oil is on the ice. Let's not even talk about Houston, Texas, or Cancer Alley. Bottom line is fossil fuels are not the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so I believe that's our last speaker. I'm going to turn over to Dr. Off. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Ayano will close out this meeting in just a second. But just in case you had known, so we're going to reconvene at four. If you want to speak at four, make sure you register again. The afternoon tickets from the first session, they don't count right now. So please re-register, it's open right now outside where it was before. Um, and it's probably because the next speaker is going to be really impressive. I ask you to adapt the very exact rules, which is we're going to reconvene at four, but I want to provide an opportunity.
Thank you to everyone who provided comments during this session. We shall reconvene, as others have said today, at four PM for session two of this public hearing. Thank you, have a great afternoon. I now conclude the first session of the Corps' public hearing on Embridge's permit request.